Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for joining us and welcome to this meeting of the Lakewood Planning Commission. It is Wednesday, May 21, 2025. It is 7:03 and I am calling this meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Hi, Commissioner Buckley?
Here.
Commissioner Gribb-Liunes?
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Here.
Commissioner Overall?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
You have a quorum?
All right, thank you. Before we dive into tonight's agenda, I thought I would make an announcement for the benefit of the community, all who are here and all who are regularly watching. The planning commissioners received news which I think saddened all of us a little more than a week ago. Our former commission member, Kip Kolkmeier, and our immediate former chair is no longer a member of this body. He was not planning to leave the commission, but he was, he and his family were trying to move from one house in Lakewood to another, and they succeeded in selling their house, but the closing for the house they thought they were moving into fell apart, and consequently, he had to temporarily relocate elsewhere. He's, I understand, still trying to live in Lakewood and still trying to stay committed to being involved in this community, but for the time being, he is living in Denver, and so therefore, he is not on the commission anymore. He was no longer eligible. So therefore, we are down to five members. This body normally has seven members. Former Commissioner Bill Furman left us right after he was elected to City Council in a special election back in March, and now Mr. Kolkmeier unfortunately is not with us anymore either, which means that in my role as Vice Chair, I have become the Chair of this commission pursuant to our rules and regulations. And so I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Kolkmeier for his service to Lakewood. I think he was a tremendous asset to this commission on the time that he was on it, and most of that time, he was chairing it. He brought over thirty years of his legal career experience practicing in land use law. He brought his vast experience serving for many years on the Jefferson County Board of Adjustment, and also before that for many years on the Planning Commission of the City of Springfield, Illinois, when he once lived there. And we appreciated his experience. We appreciated his expertise. I appreciated, you know, the model he gave us for getting business done efficiently. And so, Kip, if you're watching tonight, thank you for, thank you for your service to Lakewood. I think everyone here appreciates it greatly, and we will do our best to move on boldly without you. So with that, I think that adequately explains the tee-up for item number three on the agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Item three, election of officers.
All right, so according to the rules and regulations of this commission, whenever a vacancy happens in the Chair, the Vice Chair immediately becomes the Chair. That has been thrust upon me, and I will do my best with that that I can. And the bylaws go on to say that at the next regular meeting of the commission, which is this one, there shall be an election for Vice Chair. Now, I will also note, before we hold that election, that the rules and regulations also state that there shall be an election of all the officers, the Chair, the Vice Chair, and the Secretary, whenever new members of the commission are appointed. And I understand that the City Council is interviewing candidates tomorrow night, and so it could be just a matter of several more weeks before we have new members of this commission. And so therefore, it's very likely that at our next meeting, if not then certainly the meeting after, we're going to have to have an election of all the officers anyways. And so the rules also permit the commission, if it is our pleasure, to table any matter that is on our agenda to a future meeting. So we could dive into an election for a Vice Chair, but we're just going to have to elect everyone again in a few weeks anyways. And so if anyone on this commission is willing to move to, to table the election until we have new officers seated, I'm willing to entertain that. Don't we have new members seated? Mr. Commissioner Williams?
I move to, to table this to our next meeting.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? I will ask for a vote. A yes vote will mean that we will vote for the Vice Chair along with the two other officers at the next meeting. A no vote means we want to select a Vice Chair right now.
Point of order, I don't think the buttons are working.
I see that, yeah. I, hold on.
I'll go ahead and, yep.
I believe they should be working now, but no. Mr. Clerk, I think they're still not working. I don't...
I'll go ahead and start working on that. I can also take a yes or no vote for this one.
All right. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yep. Commissioner Buckley?
Yes.
Commissioner Gribb-Liunes?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Overall?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
That has been tabled.
All right, we will come back to electing all three of our officers at our next meeting, hopefully with the strength of two more new enthusiastic members. Item number four, Mr. Clerk?
Item four, 0825-0001-Zoning Ordinance Amendments.
Okay. I was informed beforehand that there is not an extensive staff presentation tonight, so Mr. Rice from our planning staff would like to make a few brief remarks, and then we will get into public comment.
Yes, so we don't have a staff presentation this evening, but I do want to acknowledge there were some comments on Lakewood Speaks about the corner of Alameda and Kipling and the mapping change that should occurred. That's noted. My mapper was actually out of the office, and I wasn't able to get that posted online in a timely manner. The other thing I want to note is, did have some comments that there were some issues with the redline documents not showing redlines, and we did get those revised, and they're accurate on the website. So if you were able to look at the redline when they weren't showing the redlines, we updated those documents for you. So, and if you have any other questions or comments from staff, we're available for questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rice. And with that, we will move into public testimony. So I have a list of people here who have signed up. If you did not sign up on any of these sheets, I will call your name at the end if you're still here and wish to comment and were not able to sign up. Everyone will have three minutes to speak. There will be a light in front of you. It goes yellow after two minutes, 30 seconds, and red at three minutes to inform you that your time is over. The commissioners may ask you questions when you are done with your remarks, and so we thank you all for coming out and speaking with us and sharing your views. I will make one more remark too, before we go into public comment. Just as a matter of decorum, as I'm easing into this new role as Chairman, I'll also note that the rules and regulations of the commission, you know, do impose upon the Chair the requirement to, to keep and maintain decorum and civility in all of our meetings. In our public hearing two weeks ago on a separate matter, we had an unfortunate instance that there were several times where members of the audience were booing and making audible discord with people who came up to speak for public comment. Please don't do that to your neighbors and fellow residents of the city. You know, if you want to express agreement, we welcome you to wave your hands, give thumbs up, you know, make enthusiastic motions and facial expressions in the seats. We can see you. Please refrain from clapping and audible, audible approval. And likewise, let's be polite. If you disagree with what someone is saying, it's enough to disagree and say a position that you state. You do not need to boo or demean anyone who is coming up here to speak. With that, we will move into our speakers. The first person who's on tonight is Gary Harper. Welcome, Mr. Harper.
Thank you. I live in the Alameda Homes neighborhood down here, next to the Milestone Development where it's planned, or actually not planned, but I would like to take just a minute to thank you for your time and effort. I know you don't get paid for this unless things have changed. So, that being said, first of all, I know we need to develop that area. I mean, there's nobody has a problem with that development. The comprehensive plan also, no issue there. However, the zoning aspect of this piece of property, and I'm only going to speak to this piece of property because that's the only one I am familiar with. The first part of this, of it is, is that the reason it came up for development, supposedly to change the zoning, I mean, was that it's difficult to develop. I disagree with that. And the reason I disagree with it is that that property was zoned R2. Milestone Development purchased that property knowing that. It may be difficult for Milestone to develop it, but another person might not need, have any problem with developing. They purchased it knowing full well what the zoning was. So that's one point. When I moved into this neighborhood down here, the comprehensive plan for 2025 says that only support, they want to respect and protect the existing character of Lakewood's stable neighborhoods. Only support the rezoning of single-family properties and stable neighborhoods when the rezoning request is consistent with existing surrounding land uses and the character of the neighborhood. By the Planning Commission here and potentially the city government, they say, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. It says they will do it through a site plan review process. There is no site plan review process for this piece of property. Therefore, Planning Commission and potentially City Council are doing this on their own, just arbitrarily doing it. Okay, you're going to rezone it and make it multifamily without the proper process as, as outlined in the comprehensive plan. That's one thing. In effect, what you're doing is you're acting as an agent for that developer by doing this. I mean, that's just the way it is. On the face of it, it is a fact. This also is potentially a perfect example of spot rezoning. And I'm sure you probably know what spot rezoning is, and well, my time has expired, but I would tell you that I was going to read what spot rezoning is for everybody out there, but this is a perfect example of spot rezoning. You are doing it for one person at the expense of many.
Yep, understood, sir. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Harper? All right, I don't have any questions for you, sir. I will note, yeah, I understand the neighborhood sentiment, and your sentiment is so well expressed, right, that this is, you know, it feels like this is a peculiar bit of rezoning, right? You know, to be clear, we are doing a legislative rezoning where literally tens of thousands of parcels in the city of Lakewood are getting remapped, but that's just because we're changing what zone districts we have. And so tens of thousands of parcels are affected. They have to go to the new zoning designations. But what I do understand, you know, is that this property is a little unique. It's one of very few, just a handful out of those thousands, that is getting like a classification that we might say is not like-for-like. It's not like the most similar new designation to the old one. And so while I think, to be clear to everyone, it is, you know, legally proper for this commission to rezone it to anything else, is a prudent, good public policy measure. I mean, I think that's a totally different question, your point that, you know, the neighborhood desire is a more like-for-like rezoning is definitely noted and one I can sympathize with.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nancy Anderson. Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Yes. Andy Nowar? Sorry about that, ma'am. Mr. Nowar, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Planning Department, for being here tonight. My name is Andy Nowar. I live also in the Alameda Homes neighborhood right by Milestone. I'm hoping I can come here tonight with possible solutions rather than just complaints. I spent a lot of time since the last meeting, listening to your study session, I think it was maybe in February around this, and what I heard a lot of was the desire from the commission for lower-cost ownership opportunities, the need, Lakewood's desperate need to increase density, to increase its growth, to revitalize its neighborhoods and its residential areas. And one last thing was probably the lack of need of more commercial. And so what I think we have here is a great opportunity to fulfill all of those needs. My thoughts are, the current zoning ordinance now has three low-form residential categories, A, B, and C, they are now being called, with very little to distinguish them. They all have the same height restriction. There is a sort of small difference in the allowable square footage of the property and probably a few other minor things. I think this is missing an opportunity. I think there should be an amendment that the low-form residential C, the one that was urban before and is now called C, be changed to allow for a 35-foot height restriction so that something like townhouses or duplexes would be allowed in that area or more easily built in that area. My concern, even with the change that I'm glad the planners are in fact going to make, to the residential M designation, the multifamily designation, it still has a 45-foot height limit, which is completely out of context for the neighborhood. It also has no limit to the size, square footage size of the property. So basically, what could happen is it could be replatted into whatever it would be, six or seven different plats. Each of those could be a four-story apartment building. What we would like to see is smaller plats, taller buildings, townhomes, duplexes, something that fits in with the neighborhood. And in fact, to that point, it seems to me that the part of the parcel that is currently MEU, which is a zone that is going away and was going to be rezoned to MRU, I believe, could actually better be rezoned to the RM designation. That would allow for a four-story apartment building if what milestone apartment developers, the owners of that property, would like to build there. That would make a lot more sense than an MRU designation. Actually, MRU doesn't exist. It's MR. I'm not sure why the U continues to come up, but MR would, or I'm sorry, the RM, no, the MR, very confusing. The MR mixed use would require some commercial, which we don't need. So what would make sense on that corner lot is a four-story apartment building, and then going down to townhomes and duplexes in the next portion. The bigger part of that lot that all of our neighbors are concerned about, that could have a 35-foot limit and be townhouses in a residential, low-form residential category, which is what it is now and would keep it like-for-like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nowar. I appreciate deeply your, your research and making sense of all these acronyms and bringing to us a constructive solution. See, I will note just the, your suggestion to allow a 35-foot height limit in the RLC, that's the residential low-form C district, that would, of course, if we were to do that route and chose to use that district on the Milestone property, it would apply not just at Milestone, it would apply to, you know, many thousands of properties citywide. Go ahead.
My thought to that is, I'm unclear about the need to change lots that are clearly suburban in nature, single-family homes, to that C designation. I think the C designation could be a targeted use for areas where we want to increase the density. There's no point in calling single-family homes urban. They're not going anywhere. They're not changing. I don't know why they striped part of Lakewood as urban rather than suburban. Keep the suburban ones B, make the urban ones that you want to develop and increase density on C.
Okay, I understand that perspective then. Any other commissioner questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Cheryl Ladner?
Hi. I too am from the Alameda Homes in Ward Three. And I am against the rezoning of the Milestone land on Kipling and Alameda. Last time, we tried to do this with the big apartments and everything. Lakewood went in, did a really exhaustive, you know, look at the trafficking, and just decided, they tried to figure out how they could come out on Hoyt to Alameda, how they could come out Dakota, and it was, they determined at that point, there was really no good way. So I would like you to look at that, what they decided, because nothing has changed. Our little development is exactly the same, and those are our two entrances and exits. I too would like it to stay to B and not to C. Single-family homes for young families, duplexes, townhomes, I think our young families really want that more than apartment buildings. And this would be a perfect, with the 16 acres, would be a perfect place for them to put that on there instead. And I think in Lakewood particularly, I work with trafficked ladies and families, and they, they really would like a little homes of their own, rather than the apartment buildings cause, cause just a lot more problems. Also, Milestone has not chosen to meet with us at all, which they did last time. I don't understand. I thought legally, they had to meet with us and discuss all of the different... I thought legally, they had to meet with us and discuss all of the different aspects of it. So I would like them to do that also. So, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. Any commissioner questions? Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, vice chair. I think it's just a clarification that I'd like to make. This is not a zoning change set forth by Milestone. This is a citywide rezone and update. So I think that may be, well, that is, why Milestone hasn't reached out to the community, because they are not requesting this, even though maybe in the eyes of the community, this will benefit them.
Oh, okay.
But they have not requested to make that change. I just wanted to make that clear, that that's, they would, if they were changing the zoning, have to reach out to the community.
Okay. So after they rezone it, then they'd have to reach out? Is that what you're saying?
No. Because the city is rezoning it, the developer is not, he doesn't have, they just will now own whatever that zoning would become.
Okay. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, thank you for those helpful clarifications. Commissioner O'Neill, right. This is, you know, the matter before us tonight, of course, does affect the Milestone property, but it is a citywide rezoning. So as I said, there's, you know, thousands of parcels potentially being impacted. Mr. Dittson, Paul Dittson.
I'm here again. I was not able to post the attachment that I referenced in my online comment. You have a copy, I believe, in front of you, if you want to reference that. That is a memo from Colorado Department of Transportation regarding what they take to be context-sensitive development principles. In the, and as I said in the comments, in the comprehensive plan, area-level planning is directed by the comp plan and context-sensitive development principles, yet none has been done prior to this broad-stroke rezoning proposal. This is the same formula that was used to rezone commercial and retail to the current mixed-use designations in the 2012 zoning ordinance. That did not come without unintended consequences, and I am very concerned that the same type of rezoning to residential, which is very distinctive, in my view, from the type of rezoning that was done for commercial and retail, that it would not also come with some potentially severe unintended consequences. So there are shortcomings of the rezoning that's been proposed, and I think you're hearing comments, and you have heard comments in the last meeting, and city council's been hearing comments from horse owners and agricultural land use owners regarding that and also the Milestone property. So I think that's already evident, that there are some problems with this proposed rezoning. So as I said in my comments, I think that area plans are necessary to accurately assess the contexts of our neighborhoods. And the directive from the comprehensive plan, I believe, really deserves to be followed in sitting down an area, a neighborhood scale kind of process to assess what the context should be. And in some cases, you know, we have designations, even in today's zoning, that are noncompliant. And I think this might be an opportunity to correct some of the misapplication of zoning according to the current land use that some properties have. For example, we've got large acre-size properties that have horse equestrian use, and yet they're zoned R1-6 in an area that is, you know, predominantly that way. So I'd like to see if we have an opportunity to try to sort that out here.
Thank you, and your time is up. Any questions for Mr. Dittson? I guess I'll have one question. Can you give an example of where there's an R1-6 property today that's over an acre?
I can't give you an exact, I wouldn't be able to give you one reliably. I know that there are several in the Iver neighborhood, but I would have to check the map to be sure that they're not, and maybe it's R1-12, but the point is that it's an R1-48 type of property, but it is zoned at a much lower level.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Chris Schlegel.
Hey, guess what? We're going to be talking about Milestone.
Great.
Yeah, great.
Please, yeah, please speak into the microphone.
Good evening. Chris Schlegel, Ward Three. I'm here with the Alameda Homes Community Association about Milestone. Starter homes are defined as smaller-sized houses, patio homes, multiple units with single-house scale buildings, all on smaller lots, with a purchase price that's a third of what the regular price would be in general. However, the American dream of owning your first home, a starter home, of stepping into real estate, the single greatest source of personal equity and savings in the United States is vanishing. According to the 2023 U.S. Census Bureau, just 9% of the new homes built were truly starter homes. 9%. In April 2024, a pro-construction organization compiled statistics from Zillow, Redfin, Freddie Mac, and the U.S. Census Bureau that ranked the state of Colorado as the second-worst state for buyers looking for starter homes. Second-worst. And out of the 55 largest U.S. metro areas, the Denver-Aurora and Lakewood combination city ranked fifth-worst. According to Realtor.com, there are two major factors contributing to the decline in true starter homes. One, zoning laws and building codes. Smaller, more affordable housing gets zoned out of commission, just like what is potentially going to happen at the Milestone property, a property that's been zoned for starter homes, patio homes, for 20 years. Two, developers want to build bigger houses or apartment complexes because they're more profitable. While I understand that a business such as Milestone wants to make a profit, it's imperative that if the city planners and this planning commission truly want to live up to the ideal of, and I quote, "to provide a wide variety of housing types and costs to meet the current and future needs of the residents," if you want to live up to that ideal, then you must not allow Milestone property to be rezoned to anything but low-form residential. In other words, starter homes. Lakewood doesn't need more apartments. There are currently over 420,000 apartments in the greater metro area. Lakewood needs to provide an opportunity for future generations to buy their first home, and this commission can make that happen. Designate the Milestone property as either RLB or RLC, then maybe we can stop Lakewood from being the fifth-worst place in the country to buy a home.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Yeah, thank you. That was well received. Elias Arias.
My name's Elias Arias, Ward Three, also talking about the Milestone property. I live on South Holland Court. I prepared a public testimony, and I'm going to read it as-is, but I want to acknowledge some of the information that came to light. Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill, for specifying that, and also Mr. Weiss for clarifying some of that information. Good evening. My name's Elias Arias, Ward Three, live on South Holland Court. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I want to express my continued opposition to the proposed rezoning of the Milestone property from R2 to RMU. While I trust that the planning commission is acting in good faith, I do not believe the property owners are approaching this process in the same spirit. Again, Commissioner O'Neill, that's, yeah. We've heard that the parcel is difficult to develop under current zoning, but what hasn't been explained is how building large apartment complexes, offices, and retail space somehow makes that easier. This proposal feels like a solution in search of a problem. Before we talk about rezoning, we should begin by understanding what the area's infrastructure can realistically support, things like traffic flow, utility capacity, and emergency access. That foundational work hasn't been done. Instead, we're skipping ahead with the necessary, I'm sorry, without the necessary due diligence, and that's deeply concerning. Rezoning should only happen under specific conditions. According to the city code, it requires either material change in the neighborhood or compatibility with surrounding land use. Neither of those criteria are met here. This neighborhood has not changed. It's still composed of single-family homes and duplexes, quiet, residential, and walkable. That's exactly why I chose to live here. I moved here for the dead-end streets, the peaceful atmosphere, and to have a safe place to walk my late dog. This rezoning would disrupt all of that. It would bring more traffic, noise, and light pollution. It would also increase the likelihood of cut-through driving as people look to bypass the nearby traffic signals. That affects our safety, our quality of life, and our ability to enjoy the neighborhood as it exists today. Most importantly, this proposal lacks community support. In terms of per capita opposition, this may be one of the most widely and vocally opposed rezonings in recent memory. Residents have consistently and clearly expressed that we do not support this change, so I ask you, on behalf of myself and my many neighbors, to reject this rezoning, take a step back, start from what the infrastructure can support, and make sure the process is being driven by sound planning, not just the interests of one property owner. And one of the things that I'll say to that point is that, you know, in light of what Commissioner O'Neill mentioned, is that this is not an application by the property owners. It kind of makes it seem like a slam dunk that, rather than, and I understand that there's a categorical change of the rezoning that is why this happened, but it makes more sense that, in that categorical rezoning, that it does go more one-to-one, I think, as you mentioned, Commissioner Buckley, so.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions? We appreciate you coming out.
Thank you.
And after him will be Russia Nowor. Good evening.
Got some questions. I'm kind of a latecomer in this process. All of my information really came from this, which I got yesterday. It seems to me like this is a straight-driven phenomenon. Am I accurate?
What do you mean by that?
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. What do you mean by that?
Because of change in state law, certain, came right out of this newsletter.
Oh, certainly, yes. So, you know, big picture, I'll be brief. Historically, Lakewood has updated its comprehensive plan and its zoning about once every 10 to 15 years. We're at that threshold right now. Lakewood last adopted a comprehensive plan in 2015. It was called, well, it had a horizon planning year of 2025. So we're at the end date of the last comprehensive plan of the city. So last month, this commission recommended that city council adopt a new drafted comprehensive plan for the city, and along with the comprehensive plan, we are doing zoning updates. Some of the changes to the zoning code are requirements imposed upon us by new state laws, but some of the changes are not. Some of them are other things that we're doing for all sorts of other reasons. I hope that helps.
Okay. In the information that I have in front of me, you're talking about maximum square footage, 3250, 3,000, 2,500. Let's talk about basements. Is that figured into the 2,500 square foot? Or are we talking about above ground?
It's about, the intent is that it's above-grade square footage.
So hypothetically, you could double all of the figures that I'm looking at in this newsletter?
Hypothetically, yeah. You'd see a 2,500-square-foot ranch home, but it'd have a basement. That's possible.
I spent maybe an hour last night trying to find a decent map. Where can I find a decent map that will show me the streets and the new zoning?
Lakewood Speaks has a map posted. I understand there have been comments about the lack of clarity of that map. It is the map we have.
Well, from my opinion, it's kind of inadequate. Another thing that was not addressed in here is unusual lot sizes. The only thing it mentioned is the possibility of auxiliary buildings being put on a large lot for residential purposes. Am I accurate?
Yes. The new zoning does envision the possibility of so-called cottage homes, so multiple primary buildings could be on a residential lot in some circumstances.
Okay. This is my personal situation. I happen to have about an acre lot, and I'm not planning to put anything else on it, but that would be a possibility because of the square footage of the lot.
It likely would be. I mean, it would depend on the circumstances of your lot, which I can't know, but yeah, theoretically, a large lot could allow multiple primary homes on it.
An interesting aside on that is I live there about 40 years, and it's an old farm property, and there always has been.
I'm sorry, sir. Could you please speak into the mic? Thank you.
I've been a resident here for about 40 years. It's an old farm property, and there's always been an auxiliary farm building that has been used as a rental for forever. And shortly after I bought the property, a gentleman from planning, Gordon Alshire, does that ring any bells with you? It's probably long before your time. He put me through hell, saying that this was a nonconforming, illegal property, and it amazes me that here we are, talking about encouraging people possibly to put auxiliary residential units on large-lot properties. What has happened in the last 40 years, apparently a great deal.
Yeah.
So I urge you to be cognizant of the change in your program. Oh, one last thing.
Thank you, sir.
I would urge you to improve your timing a little bit. I only got this yesterday, and there's a lot of misinformation going on that this helped dispel.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for this, but, you know, 24 hours, it's pretty skinny. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Russia.
Commissioner Buckley, if you go back to the February 19th and the April 23rd meeting, you can see maps.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, can you say those dates again? February?
19th, April 23rd.
Yeah, thank you. So that's where the public can go, look on Lakewood Speaks for those maps. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, vice chair. I, apologies for the duplicate comment here, but I am looking at the Lakewood Speaks website right now, and I do see a current version of the zoning map proposed. So I just want to make sure everyone knows that you can go on there and find it. So that is there. And, yeah, so apologies. I clicked my button before we clarified that.
All right. Well, thank you. Ms. Nowor.
Hi, again.
Welcome back.
Thank you. My name is Russia Nowor, and I live in the Alameda Homes neighborhood, and I'm here to state my opposition to the proposed rezoning of the Milestone property. There's been a lot of discussion about proposed rezoning. Those changes have not been made, and I understand that the mapping staff was out, but as of now, nothing is in writing, and so that's one concern. But what I want to make sure that this planning commission and the planning staff here is that the residents of the Alameda Homes neighborhood are not a bunch of nimby's. Everything that you've heard proposed tonight has been part of a discussion with the owners of the Milestone property for 20 years. For 20 years, we have been asking for patio homes, duplexes, and townhomes to be built on that property. In addition, we have worked really hard to make sure that any development would fit within the surrounding neighborhood and its character, which is a value of the city within the surrounding neighborhood and its character, which is a value of the cities that you have outlined in the current zoning ordinance and the new Redline version. What I'm asking for, again, to be solution-oriented, is that the rezoning of the neighborhood is like-for-like as the zoning ordinance is updated. And for what I can tell, that's actually, that would be to B, Low Form Residential B, and that any, anything other than that goes through the proper neighborhood meeting. I get really concerned when I start to look at the current zoning ordinance and the outlined steps when there's legislative rezoning that requires a neighborhood meeting, and that this is one of the few properties in Lakewood that would be upzoned, and not, not a little change, we're talking quite a significant change through this zoning ordinance. Instead, what I'm asking is that these two things get separated, and that for now, the plans are that it's Low Form Residential B, and that there is a neighborhood meeting to discuss all of the proposals that have been made tonight, which include changing that zoning to Low Form Residential C and having the allowable height to be 35 feet. This isn't anything different than what we have asked for over and over again for 20 years, and I want to make sure that people here, on behalf of myself and the neighborhood, that we're here to find workable solutions that work for the development of that property. What we're not okay with is high-rise, high-density development on that property that backs right up to a bunch of ranch-style, single-family homes. It just does not fit within the current infrastructure or the development.
Thank you. Your time is up. Commissioner, questions? I have one for you, Ms. Nowar, just asking you to clarify your ask. I think, you know, I understand for a lot of people, all these zoning designations can get confusing really fast, so I think I heard you in your speech mention-
I had to make a literal table to translate it all for myself, so yes.
Same. But I think I heard you mention Low Form Residential B and Low Form Residential C, so those are two different zones with slightly different lot sizes and maximum building sizes. And then you also mentioned a 35-foot height limit, and just to be clear, both the Low Form Residential B and Low Form Residential C, as proposed at this moment, but possibility of being changed by the Commissioner Council, if we feel like it, have a 25-foot height limit, and you mentioned being okay with a 35 limit. So maybe try to clarify, what is it that you would most like to see?
Speaking for, it's weird, because I feel like I'm representing two different bodies. Speaking for the neighborhood, I can say like-for-like, I think, from single-family home designation to the new zoning ordinance update codes, the like-for-like zoning is Low Form Residential B. My husband's suggestion regarding changing, who's Andy Nowar?
Yeah.
Regarding, right, like, there's so many Nowars. Regarding changing Low Form Residential C to having a 35-foot height limit, I think, is quite brilliant. So that's what I personally would like to see happen, but again, before any of that changes, if there's anything other than Low Form Residential B, which I think is the most like-for-like for what the current zoning is, I'm asking for a neighborhood meeting, and I think that any other changes to that zoning should be decoupled from the zoning ordinance update and follow the legislative rezoning process. I understand what's going on with the city. I was raised by a planner. I know what I'm, I actually know a little bit about what I'm talking about, but this, this significant upzoning through this process is highly unusual, and I'm asking that this doesn't get mushed in, because what ends up happening is if you don't have a neighborhood meeting now and it gets rezoned, we'll never get to have a neighborhood meeting for the rezoning of this property, because then it's rezoned, and Milestone can put whatever they want on there. So it's creating an unintentional loophole, and I would like that loophole to please be closed.
All right. Thank you.
And I think that that's Low Form Residential B.
Okay. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Steph Barnard, and it looks like Lee Peters has donated some time to Steph. It's Lee. Thank you. I see Lee here. So Ms. Barnard, you'll have six minutes instead of three.
Hi.
Hello.
Stephanie Barnard. I live in Ward Two, and I want to talk about the Kawani Gardens area, which, and, you know, anything I say, correct me if I'm wrong, I know Stephen can. You seem like you're very dialed in, right? So I moved to this area, which is basically south of Crown Hill Park, because it is so unique, and from what I understand, there may not be any other areas in Lakewood that are like Kawani Gardens. I don't know. That's what, that's what I found, and what that means is most of the properties are 18,000-square-feet lots. Some are somewhat larger, some are somewhat smaller, but most of them, I think, if you look at the map, you'll see, like, that, that square footage is pretty common. And the other thing about this area and why those lot sizes are 18,000 is because people can live in the city and have animals, right? Can have livestock, chickens, horses, goats, et cetera, right? Like, it's very unique that way, to be in a basically suburban area. And I remember when I first moved in, and this is before I was a horse owner, I noticed in Crown Hill Park, there's like this big round pen. It's called a round pen. And I don't know if any of you are horse owners, but to have a round pen in an open-space park, I've never seen it before, right? Well, it's because blocks of houses below Crown Hill have horses, right? And so it is an area where you can go and exercise your horse in a nice big pen, and not to mention the park itself. So I think the zoning code is changing in that area to allowing the lot sizes to be cut in half. Am I right on that?
I am not sure. That might be a good question for Mr. Rice when you're done with your remarks.
R118, I think, is how it's zoned right now, and then I think it's going to be-
A little less than half. I think the lot size was 7,000 square feet, as is proposed.
Okay. So the other, when you drive, like, I really encourage everyone to drive south of Crown Hill Park and just go in and out of the streets, because, you know, for an animal person, it's like you're in a wonderland, right? That's very unique because of the property and the animals. But the other thing I want to say is, and I don't know, are any of you horse owners? No, okay. Or goat owners, or sheep owners, or chicken owners, or no? Oh, yay, chickens! Me too. But horses in particular, because lots of, the lots are big enough to have two horses when it's 18,000, that they need space to move, and people don't realize that the number-one killer of horses is colic, and colic is a problem with the gut, right? Where all of a sudden, there's an impaction or a blockage. It can happen for all kinds of reasons, but that's a common one. And when something goes in a horse's mouth, like, within humans, you know, it can come out, right? In horses, it can't come out. Like, once something goes in, it has to go all the way to the end, and that's a big problem, right, for a big animal? But mustangs don't get colic, because mustangs move, right? All day long, they're continuously moving, and I just want to make the point that when you cut these lot sizes, and, you know, over time, one by one, by one, by one, over the years, that area will not be what it is now, and it's really unique, right? To be able to be a horse owner and have a horse in that neighborhood is just, like, amazing. So am I, I have a little bit of time left. I, I don't want to just keep talking just because I have another minute and 30 seconds, but I just want to make the point that the neighborhood's unique, and I know, you know, you guys make these points about Lakewood and what you want, what your goals are, right? And it looks like now, it's, it used to be G, and now it's I, to respecting unique characteristics and attributes of individual neighborhoods, and again, major unique neighborhood, right across from an open space where you can actually use it with your animals, and that dang round pen that's, like, historical probably unto itself. So I'll stop now, but I hope you get my point, and please ask me questions if you have any, and I hope you'll go visit that area so you can see what I'm talking about.
Absolutely, yeah. You made yourself very clear, and we thank you. Questions from the commissioners?
Was I too clear?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing no questions, but yes, I am, I am familiar with the neighborhood and-
You know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Shelley Woodward?
I'm going to have to give you a second.
Okay, Ms. Woodward, passing. Billy Jones?
My name is Billy Jones. I'm an attorney with Lathrop GPM, and I represent Milestone, one of the landowners who we've heard so much about over the last few meetings. Quickly, Milestone Development develops high-quality apartment communities, and those communities are all throughout the Front Range, and they provide much-needed and diverse housing to communities like Lakewood and many others. I'm here today to say Milestone supports the zoning ordinance amendments insofar as the property we own, which is presently MEU, will be reclassified as MRU, and we also support it with the property currently R2 being reclassified as RM, assuming, as we understand it, that the final version of the code for that property will allow multifamily projects, 45 feet in height, without unit number restrictions or building size restrictions other than the setbacks in height. We were at the meeting about a month ago, and obviously here today to listen. I'd like to speak briefly on some of the issues that were raised and share with the Commission Milestone's perspective. There's a reason this property has been undeveloped and is essentially laid fallow for 20 years, and the reason is the fundamental reality of real estate development now and in the foreseeable future here in Colorado is that it's not economically viable to develop these properties into single-family homes. It's not a matter of profit or how much profit. The reality is those developments can't happen, because anyone who attempted it would not make money, they would lose money. That's the reason this property hasn't been developed for 20 years, and that reason will continue without an appropriate like-for-like rezoning that I mentioned earlier. You know, I was here at the last meeting talking about Envision 2040, and I thought to myself that, given the situation, you know, at some point, we may be talking about Envision 2060, and it would be a real shame if that property was still sitting there with nothing on it. I want to talk for a minute about the comprehensive rezoning plan. I appreciate the commissioners speaking up over the fact Milestone didn't ask for this. This is a comprehensive plan, Lakewood-wide. I think it's important as part of that, that the commission treats similar properties the same. I don't think it's appropriate, when you're doing a comprehensive plan like this, to single out properties, whether owned by Milestone or otherwise, for differential treatment or a different set of rules. And finally, let me speak for a minute about height, which was certainly a topic at the last meeting, and the 90-foot buildings were brought up. Let me be completely clear. Milestone is not going to build a 90-foot building. Milestone doesn't want to build a 90-foot building. Milestone is not in the business of building 90-foot buildings. What Milestone does do is build three- and four-story apartment buildings, not 90-foot towers, and that's all that Milestone will do out there. There will be no 90-foot tower. Milestone develops high-quality apartment communities to provide much-needed housing. We'd like to do that here, and we support the proposed zoning changes in that regard. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. We always appreciate getting multiple perspectives on everything. Commissioner O'Neill?
Hi. Does Milestone ever build anything for purchase to sell, or is it always rental properties?
With the caveat that I'm not sure I can speak to everything Milestone has ever done, I will say primarily what Milestone does is build apartment communities, and those are typically leased by tenants, and obviously, there's a landlord that owns the building and the facilities, makes sure them and all the amenities are kept up, but it's usually that type of development that is typically what Milestone does.
Okay. Does Milestone have plans for this property now, given the new zoning being considered?
No.
So nothing's in the-
No, I mean, and this, if I may, I mean, this process was not something, not something driven by us, we're driven along with it like all the other property owners in Lakewood.
Yeah.
And we certainly don't have any plan at this point. We'd obviously have to see what the zoning is, and at that point, assess what development plans, if any, we would bring and follow the appropriate process that's been laid out by Lakewood.
Right. Okay. And then, given that there's not something already in development, or in pre-design or any, anything at this point, and therefore, I would guess, no financing attached to a development coming, would, would, and I, maybe you can't answer this, but would Milestone consider building something for purchase? Townhomes, condominiums?
You know, I, I think the, the townhome and condominium discussion, along with the single-family homes, runs into the same problem, which is in the construction environment that we're in today in Colorado with costs and all of the other things, it's not just Milestone. Those types of projects are just simply not economically viable on a property like this, on two arterials, given the location and the size and some of the other requirements like setbacks and things of that nature. So I think the answer to your question is no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner, overall. There's more questions for you, sir.
I apologize.
Yes, you mentioned, and thank you, Mr. Chair, you mentioned that you thought like-for-like would be appropriate.
Yes.
Do you believe that the current proposal of MRU or MR is, is like-for-like?
Let me double-check here, but I believe the answer to the question is yes. We think it's like-for-like for that property that's R2 to become RM. The property that's MEU, we think it's appropriate for it to be MRU.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, sir, and I have a question now as well.
Yes.
I'm going to quibble with what you just said. I agree with you that the most like-for-like zoning of mixed-use employment will be mixed-use residential. The, I think, the most like-for-like rezoning of the R2, which is a current zone district that's also going away, that allows duplexes or single-family homes, would be one of the R-low form, RL districts, because those districts will also allow single-family duplex, triplex, cottage-home kind of development. The RM that you specifically asked for would allow multifamily housing, and so I would, I would say that's not a like-for-like, but you did say you're in favor of like-for-like, and you also said you're in favor of RM, so would you, understanding that that's the nuances of how the zoning currently works or is proposed to work, describe what you want, what you're in favor of, and why?
No, we're in favor of the parcel, the R2 parcel being, becoming RM through this comprehensive zoning plan, and the reason for that is multifaceted. We think it's an appropriate like-for-like. We also think it's appropriate for this particular property, and this is a, in some ways, a little bit of a unique property. This is a property on an arterial road that has not been developed for at least 20 years, and certainly before that, because there's nothing out there. And we think in order to be consistent with Lakewood's plans, to encourage development, to create housing, to have a diversity of housing options, that the appropriate RM classification would allow those things to happen and do it in a way that's not inconsistent with surrounding properties, and certainly not inconsistent with Lakewood's comprehensive plan and what they're looking for.
Okay. So you favor the residential mid-form RM zoning, which is not for like, like-for-like, but that's what you favor.
We do favor that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Gribbly-Unis?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Or is it Chair?
I guess I'm the chair now.
Okay. Thanks, Chair. Thanks for coming here and talking with us. I guess my question's probably pretty brief. When evaluating the financial feasibility for potential single-family or townhouse development, can you speak to the anticipated construction costs for those types of developments?
I can't. I can't provide details. The best I can do at this moment, although we can certainly provide supplemental information, is to look at the marketplace and look what's actually happened out there. I mean, if there were viable single-family home options, those are options that may be something that Milestone could have considered, or that Milestone could have considered with other buyers with a transfer of the property. None of that's happened for 20 years. So what I would say- So what I would say is I think the proof is in the pudding on that point, but no, I can't provide you with a construction estimate.
Okay. Having those numbers would be really beneficial for assisting us in evaluating this, if, for whatever reason, this were to continue being discussed in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I have an additional question too, sir. The current zoning, R2, on that part of the lot, has a, it was actually platted nearly 20 years ago with about 7,000 square foot lots, 7,000 to 8,000 square foot, I believe, maybe some as low as 6,000. The zoning minimum is 5,000 square foot. One zone that's been thrown about tonight is the RL-C zone, which is proposed to have a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet currently. So, I mean, it would strike me that nothing's stopping you from replating that and, you know, roughly increasing the number of lots by maybe about 60% with the same, you know, amount of land. How would that affect the economic viability of a low-form residential development?
I'm sorry, could you walk through the math there in the middle to see if you understand your question?
Sure. I looked at the plat map sometime between the last meeting and now. And I recall that most of the lots that were platted, it was approved by the Lakewood Planning Commission in 2007, most of those lots are between 6,000 and 8,000 square feet. The new RL-C zone district, which is one of the zones that's been suggested, and my personal opinion, if we're sticking to like-to-like, it's probably the most appropriate, that has a minimum lot size currently of 3,000 square feet, right? So if you have 7,000 or 8,000 square foot lots, you could, you know, just cut them in half, you see, and you double the number of lots, right? You know, the, the current minimum lot size in the zone district that exists today is 5,000 square foot. So if there were any lots in that neighborhood that were right at the minimum, I think they were all bigger, but if I missed any that were right at the minimum, you could still, you know, out of like, you know, two of those, you could get three of the new zoning designation, right? So in any event, you can see the number of homes is increasing even with the most like-for-like rezoning, it's still low-form residential, but there's simply more houses you can build. That has to affect the economic viability, I imagine, yes?
Well, I certainly can't say. Any, any change would affect some, the economic circumstances in some way. I think if you're talking about, does that suddenly make it viable to do, for example, a townhome development here, I, I think my honest answer is no. Because with this particular lot, the border on the arterial, you're going to lead, need a higher level of density to have the project pencil out.
Okay. Sir, has Milestone ever done any sort of development with cottage courts or fourplexes, anything of that scale? That's also something that's envisioned as being allowed in the new low-form residential zones that Lakewood is contemplating.
I, again, without speaking comprehensively on every development Milestone has ever done, I don't believe we've done that before.
Okay. Any other questions, Commission? Sir, we thank you for coming out and sharing your view.
Thank you.
I have reached the end of the list for folks who signed up to public comments. Sir, do you want to speak?
Yes, thank you.
All right, please come forward.
First, I want to thank all the citizens of Lakewood who have spoken today and it's clear they all know a lot more about this than I do.
Please, please state your name.
My name is Kirk Glinky. I live in the Iber neighborhood. I own a large lot along Lakewood Gulch and I really appreciate that community and the rural nature of it. And I'm here for two reasons. One, that I'm concerned that I just learned that it could be rezoned and I don't want to see the slots cut in half or further developed as a wonderful rural neighborhood with R1 zoning, I guess. And the other is just utter dismay at the Belmar decision. But I, I just ask, who do you represent? Is it the citizens and the communities of Lakewood or developers? And I have not heard anything good about the Belmar decision and the destruction of all those trees. And I can't say I'm as educated as my neighbors here, but I have not heard a single good thing about it. And so I ask you to consider also water use, congestion, air quality. These things are important and I, my father was Director of Building and Zoning and Code Enforcement for the Village of Oak Park in Illinois. And I know he and his department always worked for the benefit of the citizens and the community. And I know what you do is important. I know this is important and I wish I understood more about it. But yeah, I just want, what you want your legacy to be, is it going to be one of preservation of the character of our community that attracted so many of us to Lakewood or is it going to be destruction of that? And with the Belmar decision, it looks like destruction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? It looks like no. We appreciate your time, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who did not have the opportunity to sign up to speak but would like to do so? Yes, please come forward, ma'am. And state your name when you begin.
Hello. My name is Sarah Lindback and I'm a resident of the, of Ward 3 within the Alameda Homes neighborhood. I too would like to speak to my dissent of the rezoning of the Milestone property at the southeast corner of Alameda and Kipling. I made a public comment about a month ago in the last meeting and I just want to reiterate that I believe there's a responsibility when it comes to development as well as rezoning. Context, scale, and density are very important and I don't feel the proposed increase in density or height is appropriate here. I feel a low-form residential BUs would be appropriate. And I'd also like to speak to your comment, your question earlier about for rent versus for sale product. I just want to reiterate, it's just a very different product type. The use needs to be determined very early on in the process. It's not as simple as building a high-density apartment product and then later converting it to a for-sale product. It really needs to be established quite early on. Okay.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners? Thank you for your time. Thanks for coming out. Would anyone else like to speak? Who is here? There you go, ma'am. Welcome. Please state your name.
My name's Hillary Tholen. I'm in Ward 3. I, I live over in Alameda, over by Alameda and Hoyt, off Iris, actually, with my two little kids and my husband, but it's actually very distracting, sorry to try to come with my kids. But I wanted to say, I came here twice because what happens with the development is important to me. And even if I don't really have much, any, much or anything prepared right now, I just wanted you guys to know that. I'll still kind of keep coming around, walking awkwardly with my daughter to try to just, you know, be here and kind of figure out like what's going on and just be a part of the, part of it. And hopefully the, again, the neighborhood gets, is allowed to be involved or at least get some kind of notification when there is rezoning that does happen. Thank you kindly.
Yep, thank you. Mr. Williams, Commissioner Williams has a question for you, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, thank you very much for being here and for bringing your kids. I think often, and I have spoken about this in previous meetings, but I think for many people who are younger, people who are parents, people who work full-time jobs, we often, right? Me too, right? So we often don't get to hear from folks like that at these meetings and I just am, you know, I don't know whether or not the decisions that are made here or over time will necessarily be consistent with your requests, but I do want to express my gratitude for you being here and for being here with your kids and for, and to make sure that all Lakewood residents know that they should feel welcome here and they should be able to be here with their kids as parents, right? As younger people, I just really want to express my gratitude. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm glad I have my work and my personal phone so they can use it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes. Second, what Commissioner Williams said, thank you for coming out. I, I've brought some of my three young children to city meetings before and I, I highly recommend that everyone do it. It's hard. It's a sacrifice. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
The top?
All right. Come on forward, please.
Hello, my name is Aliana.
And could you please speak into the microphone, ma'am? You're coming across a little quiet.
Hello, my name is Aliana Shaw. I live in Den.
The Daniel?
Daniel Park area. I wanted to tell what this area and zoning means to me. I can have my horse with me, which, my horses, which is my best friend because I get to see him every day. And he also helps me stay out of trouble and I also get to have my chickens that I can help the community with food, with they need, needs it. The other thing with having these animals have taught me more as a kid than most adults is to get in lifetime. If you were there, you take away the mo, the.
Away are changing.
Away are changing.
Zoning.
Zoning. I will not be able to grow in the, the right way.
All right. Thank you. Great job. Any questions from the Commission? Thank you so much for coming and, and sharing that heartfelt sentiment with it. We appreciate a lot you coming out to speak. It, it matters that you show up and we appreciate it. Is there any other person present who wishes to speak to the Commission? I'm not seeing any hands, going once, twice. All right. With that, I think we will close public comment. Thank you, everyone, for coming to speak. And therefore, we will move into the Commissioner discussion portion of this agenda item so Commissioners can, we can discuss and reflect upon ourselves and debate and propose motions to change anything on the zoning map or in the text of the zoning code that is before us. So with that, I'll open the floor to Commissioners. Anyone?
Chair, if we could have a motion and a second?
Yeah, point of order. I believe that Bob's Rules of Orders do not strictly need a motion to discuss an agenda item that's currently on the floor.
That's correct. I just didn't know if the Commission is going to take a vote on this tonight. I just didn't know if the Commission wanted to have a motion and a second on the floor.
Sure. Yeah, certainly if we take a vote on anything, we'll need a motion and a second for it. But I think if we're just, if we're just discussing and throwing out ideas of what sort of motions we might want to make, then I think I'm open to proceeding with that emotion. But yes, you're, you're quite right. Before we vote, we will absolutely do a motion. Commissioner Williams and then Overall.
Thank you, Chair. I do, it's my understanding that we will be considering a handful of amendments similar going to be discussing this, but I just, before we begin that process, I just wanted to take a moment to connect what we're, what we're doing here with our zoning decisions back to some of the, the real pressing issues within our community, especially as it relates to homelessness and housing availability. There's a growing body of research across the country from the University of Washington and in the, on the comprehensive 2022 study that they put out and well beyond, showing that homelessness is not really linked to personal struggles, it's primarily a housing problem, right? Cities with high homelessness rates tend to have very high rents and very low housing availability. Rates of poverty, mental illness, things like that are not indicators of homelessness. We see this play out in states like California, which have lower poverty rates than West Virginia despite much higher rates of homelessness. I like to think of this and our community as a game of musical chairs. 10 people, if we have 10 people and 10 chairs, it means everyone gets a seat, even if you're on crutches. However, when somebody enters the game or moves to our community or grows up and it's time for them to be in the community, you then have more people than chairs. So when the music stops and it's time for everyone to sit down, someone's not going to have a chair and it will likely be the person on crutches. The only way to solve that problem is to add chairs. In Lakewood, in Colorado, and frankly, across the United States, we have done a poor job of adding chairs to make sure that everybody has one. We're now, we've done that for so long that we're now in a crisis. We must start catching up and it's our moral obligation as a community to do that. We've seen this pattern replicated across the country. A study from Zillow has suggested that when rents rise by just 5% in tight market, thousands of people may be pushed into homelessness. Here in Lakewood, average rents have risen by about 5% over the last five years, right? That's happening here in our community. That might seem modest on paper, but for a lot of families and a lot of people, that's the difference between staying housed and falling into crisis. Meanwhile, the Metro Denver Point in Time count recorded nearly 10,000 more people experiencing homelessness, a 10% increase over the previous year. These aren't abstract numbers, right? These are real people in our region, in our community, in our towns, who cannot afford a place to live. As Commissioners, we don't have the authority to deliver social services, right? But we can influence how much housing gets built. When zoning restricts multifamily housing, duplexes, ADUs, we limit supply and drive up the costs and reduce options for working families, for seniors and for people on fixed incomes. The only reason to block denser housing options is to protect the privilege of those who already have theirs and it ends up leaving the rest out to dry. Cities like Minneapolis and Portland have embraced thoughtful zoning reform and have seen lower, slower rent growth and fewer people entering homelessness and it's our moral obligation to do the same. The decisions we're going to make today about zoning may feel technical, but they're also moral. If we want to keep Lakewood inclusive and resilient and livable, we must build more housing that is denser and communities that are more walkable. I just want us to keep this in mind as a body and as a community as we have this discussion because it, it is a moral obligation that we have to continue to do that. And so I just wanted to enter that into the record before we start this broader conversation so that we can make sure that we're keeping in mind why we're doing this, right? Why we're adopting additional zoning. It's to make sure that we can provide housing for our neighbors and in our community and that's what's driving my decision-making and I hope all of us here. So I just wanted to enter that into the record before we get started on these. I know we have a lot more to discuss, but I appreciate it, Chair, for you allowing me to make that statement.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you for sharing that with the Commission and with the public. Commissioner Overall, you, you had your light on, but maybe it's off now.
It is off now. It was off before. I do have things I want to say, but I don't know if you have, if you want to open this up for discussion of the, the full.
Yeah, my intent is to open it up to discussion, to the full menu of what's before us. Anything that has to do with this set of draft changes to the zoning ordinance and to the zoning map is, is something that's in order to discuss right now if you want to.
Okay. I will start by thanking so much my fellow Commissioner for the, the level setting. I am too of the mindset that we must build, we must allow more housing to be built and that's not to the comfort of the existing property owners who are here. There are many people who are not here because they are not here yet. It's not a question of whether we grow, it's a question of how and where we grow. I am not prepared to adopt this today, though. I would like additional time for us to think about and contemplate this extremely important decision. I also, I suspect that there's more milestone discussion to be had today. I have.
I think so.
A few more thoughts and questions for staff once we get there.
All right. Yeah, so yeah, we'll definitely get to the questions tonight too of whether the Commission is ready to act, to recommend this to City Council tonight. Of course, our other option is we could continue this to another hearing for more opportunity for, for public comment and to see a draft that comes out with any amendments we may have tonight. I suspect there will be many amendments, so seeing no one else's light on, I'll. I suspect there will be many amendments, so seeing no one else's light on, I'll kick us off making a motion, and if someone wants a second, we can debate the finer points of that. Responsive to a lot of the public comment we've heard tonight and last month and in the intervening time period as well, I move that the properties at the southeast corner of Kipling Street and Alameda Avenue, owned by Milestone Apartment Developers Partners Lakewood LLP and commonly referred to as the Milestone Properties, be rezoned such that the western portion of that property, which is currently zoned mixed-use employment urban, MEU, be rezoned to mixed-use residential urban, MRU, and that the eastern portion of said property, which is currently zoned two-family and small lot residential, or R2, and a small portion, large lot residential, R112, be rezoned to low-form residential, C, RLC. Any discussion? Commissioner Overall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, you have mentioned that there are a handful of other properties or other, yes, other properties that are not necessarily like-for-like in the current proposed ordinance. Can you elaborate on which those are and if so, why they should not enjoy a similar adjustment of the code?
A great question, because we are, I think, leaning on a principle of like-for-like rezoning and justifying the rationale behind my motion. I think for the first part, I want to defer to Mr. Parker, who gave a presentation last month about what the other properties are. I recall there's only approximately eight or so. Mr. Parker, you can say what the other locations are that are maybe singled out. You had a whole presentation about it.
Yes, I don't have that up now, but I can do that. But I should also point out, I don't think, I was chatting with Mr. Rice earlier, the R2 zone isn't uniformly rezoned to one thing throughout. So there was a lot of work by the consultant in identifying properties across the city and looking at both the existing context, the lot sizes, the home sizes, the development type, as well as the conference and plan guidance. And I think there are, is a fairly even split among the R2 properties across the city between mid-form as a proposal and low-form as a proposal.
Uh huh.
So I don't think there is a one-to-one in the current proposal from R2 going to low-form.
Okay, that's a helpful clarification. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Yeah, Mr. Parker, if you could bring up that presentation from last month, if you have it, there may be questions about it later. I will say from my own perspective, Commissioner Overall, thinking about some of those other rezonings, you know, a handful of them, you know, I think were lots that were already developed, and the not like-for-like zoning category it was changing to was perhaps better reflective of how the property is currently used anyways. I know a handful of other of them that I looked at were, you know, maybe surrounded by a zone of a type. I know there were a handful of properties, I think, around the city that, you know, had a zoning that kind of appeared like a spot zone, almost like it was surrounded by some other zone type, and so it was made uniform with everything around it. I think this is a little bit different just in that this property is undeveloped and this property also has two, a split, two zoning designations on it, and those zoning designations are not uniformly the zoning designations in the adjacent neighborhood. So all those things, to me, kind of qualitatively, in my subjective view, make that, make this milestone property we're talking about a little bit differently than the small handful of other properties that maybe don't have a like-for-like rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And also, I want to acknowledge the people who have shown up today to speak for their community, which is next to this undeveloped property, especially those who have taken the arduous task of making the spreadsheets to interpret what it is we're talking about today. It is not easy, and I really appreciate the solutions that have been brought to the table today. I would be a yes vote for the record to change the eastern part, is what I believe, to low-form residential and the western part to mid-form residential.
To be clear, my motion was that the western part would go to mixed-use residential from the mixed-use employment that it is now.
Oh, correct, yes. I would be in favor of that.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioner Overall. Just some clarification here. Would this motion, is this motion consistent with the recommendation of the commission from staff from the last time that we did this, or is this a change from the last? Because I recognize we had some staff that was out and was not able to update the map. I just would like some clarification. Would your motion basically bring us in line with what we had decided at the last meeting, or is this an additional change?
Thank you for that question. My motion is a little bit different from what I understood, the suggestion that was made a month ago, where it was suggested that the property could be rezoned RM. That's the residential mid-form. My suggestion is to take the part that is the mixed-use employment and make it mixed-use residential, and take the part that is R2, one-in-two family homes, and make it RLC, which is low-form residential. So with my motion that's on the floor, no part of this property would be rezoned RM. The, it'd be mixed-use residential for part of it and low-form residential for the other part.
Thank you, Chair. And just a quick follow-up question, if I may, around the process regarding this. Assuming that the property owner would want to pursue development on this property in the future in a way that's inconsistent with adopting this, they would then have to submit a rezoning, and we would have a public hearing, and we would have a neighborhood hearing, meeting that would allow for that, correct?
That is an excellent summary of my understanding of the process of what happens if someone wants to build something that's not allowed by zoning. Either you can't build it, or you ask for a rezoning so that you can.
So just to recap here, to make sure that I understand this, because I again want to recognize that this is not simple, right? We are not, with this motion, we would not be upzoning this property in the same way. And if the property owner then wanted to take it further, we then would have a separate hearing on that.
I would say that's right.
Thank you. I would be a yes vote on this as well.
Okay. Yeah, and I want to be really abundantly clear, not just to my fellow commissioners and of course, the whole community. You know, I actually would classify my motion as an upzoning from the current property rights that this property owner has, right? You know, one thing we haven't, detail we haven't dived into a lot is that the mixed-use employment district has some restrictions that have been on it for a number of years that have made it pretty difficult for anyone to develop. And so with the mixed-use residential, it's still a mixed-use zone, but some of those restrictions go away. So, you know, mixed-use employment right now, if there's residential, it requires commercial as well. The mixed-use residential allows residential, and there can be commercial, but it doesn't have to be. So that, that important distinction, you know, not forcing a coupling of commercial and residential land uses, but rather just allowing it, you know, is, in my view, it's a crucial distinction which gives a property owner more flexibility in rights. And generally, whenever a property owner is getting more rights, I at least call that an upzoning. Did you have more, Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, sorry, I actually had a, are we allowed to ask questions of the representative of the property, or is, no, because public comment is closed?
Absolutely.
I'm unsure the rules on that. Perhaps that's a question for council?
I'll allow it if, yeah.
Yeah, Chair, as a parliamentarian, you can allow questions of, if they're prepared to answer them.
Sure, yeah. Mr. Jones, if you're prepared to ask Commissioner Williams questions, by all means do. The motion on the floor pertains to the property that you're representing, so I think that's only fair.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your willingness to come back up to the stand, I suppose.
I am happy to answer the question that you have, if I can.
Thank you. I just would like to understand if this potential change is something you and your client would be amenable to, and perhaps we can come to some kind of a compromise or an agreement or a solution in regards to this property.
I guess, let me start by saying that, you know, we certainly are agreeable and would favor what I understood was originally proposed, which was the western half will become MRU and the eastern half will become RM. Frankly, you know, whether and to the extent other options may or may not be acceptable is something that I'd have to speak with my client, we'd have to look at those, we'd have to, you know, potentially look at some scenarios and decide whether something like that is there. I think it's important to keep in mind that, you know, given the location of this property, arterial street and things like that, that having the ability to have, you know, slightly higher density in an apartment building in a 35 or 45-foot height restriction really does open up possibilities to provide housing in a way that some of the limitations may not. Now, that doesn't mean anything milestone decides to do on that property is suddenly okay. It's not. We're subject to the code like everyone else. We have to come with a plan, we have to explain what we're going to do, we have to do it, all that. There's comment, you know, so I think there's a little bit of a false dichotomy here that, you know, if the zoning goes through, that suddenly milestone has free rein. We don't. We're a property owner, and we have to follow all the rules to develop. But I think the higher density, I think, is important to put the property in a position where it is developable, whether by milestone or someone else, to provide housing for Lakewood. So I'm sorry, that's maybe not the most satisfactory answer.
I mean, I, thank you. I didn't really anticipate you to come up here and say, yeah, let's like giddy up, you know what I mean? But I, I appreciate the openness to this, and, you know, I opened this whole section by giving a passionate plea for higher density and more housing. I also recognize that we have to couple that with our commitment to the community, right, around protecting neighborhood integrity and that kind of thing. And I think that the amendment that the Chair has offered, hopefully, will allow us to achieve both of those goals to the best of our ability. And it seems to me like you are at least tentatively agreeable to that.
I, I'm certainly agreeable to the western half being MRU and having the RM one. If we're going to vary from the RM one, I think that's not, certainly not something we would support. And I would encourage, to the extent it's relevant to the commissioners or others, to look at the projects my clients have done. You know, these are high-quality, nice communities, good amenities, and really are a value-add to every community the projects we've done have been. And I would encourage, to the extent folks haven't had the opportunity, to look up some of our jobs and go see the kind of business we do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, I have a question for you as well.
Yes.
Yeah, in my earlier explanation of my rationale for this motion, I could elaborate further, I guess, and say that, you know, the RLC zoning on the eastern half that I understand you have concerns about, quite rational, I would also characterize that as an upzoning from the rights that you have with the existing R2 zoning. You know, as I was explaining earlier, the lot size minimums are smaller, you have the right to build cottage homes, you have the right to build, you know, duplexes, maybe even four units, like can fit in the size of buildings that are allowed. So, and there is significantly more flexibility. This is the zone district that, you know, is the, in my view anyway, is the most compatible with, you know, the existing zone that's there. And so, I mean, I know what you want, but, you know, can you speak to your client's, you know, willingness to go through a zoning process if, you know, they believe they can make a strong case that something else is even more appropriate?
That's certainly difficult to speak about in a situation where we don't have a plan.
Sure.
We haven't submitted it. I don't know what the density might be. I don't know what the economic circumstances which drive financing, which have to be in place as part of a plan, would be. So I mean, it's very difficult for me to say, you know, sure, that would be good or that would not be good. And I do want to say, Commissioner Buckley, I certainly understand your perspective on My response would be, I think, what I mentioned earlier, which is, I think, for this particular property and the prospects of providing quality housing to the community and having options that would allow a higher density for this property, given its location, are going to radically increase the possibility of a development on there that would, again, be consistent with all the other provisions we have to be consistent with, consistent with the process we have to go through. And I think more generally with a larger impetus that's driving this rezoning. So I, again, I think that would be a better move, and that's why we've asked for it, and that's what we think would be appropriate in this scenario.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Jones?
Thank you all for the opportunity to address you again.
Yeah, you can sit down unless another question comes up for you. Commissioner O'Neil?
Thank you, Chair. I think, for me, as I'm listening to the details of this particular property, and with all due respect to Milestone, this really isn't about Milestone. This is about the zoning and what's appropriate to this community. And at the end of the day, yes, we need more density, but what Lakewood is kind of turning into, and some of it not Lakewood's fault because we've had a construction defects law for a long time that's prevented condominiums, which would be a purchase vehicle for folks. However, what we're, where we sit now is very expensive, very expensive single-family homes and high-density apartments. So the rezone that Commissioner Buckley is suggesting starts to fill that void of potential, maybe ownership, maybe not, but patio homes or town homes or maybe condos, I don't know. But it provides an opportunity for something like that to happen at a lower profile and still brings in density, still upzones to what the rights are today. And I just think for that reason, I'm very supportive of what Commissioner Buckley has stated, and I think, though I appreciate the willingness of Milestone's attorney to address us and the questions to Milestone, it really, that's inconsequential as far as my thinking on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Grablunis?
I guess I'll just, well, thank you, Chair. Just say what I was saying to Jenny anyway, is she said exactly what I was thinking. The proposed re, or alternate zoning, I think will go a long way to providing that missing middle housing that condo buildings would have used to have solved, but as noted, the construction defect issues just created a huge hole in the marketplace for these that hopefully duplexes and quadplexes can start to scratch away at.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from the commission? I'm seeing none, and so I will ask that we take a vote. Again, the motion on the floor is that the draft zoning map be changed to show that the western portion of the Milestone property currently mixed-use employment urban be rezoned to mixed-use residential urban, and the eastern property, which is currently R2 and a handful of lots of R112, be rezoned to RLC low-form residential. A yes vote will be in favor of making that map change, and no vote will stop it from happening. And that vote passes five i's, zero nays, and so the amendment is adopted. Commissioners, we have documents, we have the rest of the zoning map of the city. If anyone has any comments there, we have a document that's nearly 400 pages long. And no, there must be something else someone wants to discuss with all that. Commissioner Overall?
This question is for staff and also a subject of discussion among my peers here. Why is it that we have not thought about incentives for low-income housing, or not incentives, about requirements for affordable housing?
We have and we are. So that's actually a subject of discussion among the council committee, the housing committee of the city council. That is something that they are working on now that will come forward, but that won't live in the zoning code. So they're looking at an inclusionary housing ordinance that would require either onsite or fee and lieu payment for offsite, affordable with every new residential project. But again, that'll live in the municipal code. We're anticipating that'll follow behind the zoning updates by maybe a month or more.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, actually- Oh, actually, since we're on the topic, do you know what the nature of the proposals are at the moment?
Still working out, so there's a consultant that's working through that right now and working with that committee, but within a month or two, we should have a fairly good idea of what those proposals will look like.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Commissioner Gribbly-Unis?
Thank you, Chair. I have a follow-up question on that. Can you say as a general statement that this might or might not mirror what Denver has done?
I can't yet, there, our Housing Committee is looking at a traditional IZ ordinance, they're also looking at some different options, so I don't know where they'll land yet.
Okay.
But we will have something.
Commissioner overall.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, and for my own edification, so is that, would that be an inappropriate amendment to the zoning ordinance, something like an amendment requiring 10% or if we wanted to be more like Denver, 15% affordable units in multifamily projects?
Yes, I mean, for a couple of reasons. First, that, yeah, the committee is putting a lot of research and time into what that right balance should be, and secondly, because I think it's been determined that this more appropriately lives as its own code within the municipal code outside of the zoning ordinance. So for those two reasons, it's not in front of you, and I don't think it's the right place for it.
Thank you.
Yeah. To that idea, Commissioner overall, I certainly think that any of us on this dais are free to make, you know, any motion or suggestion that we would like to. However, I would concur with Mr. Parker that the zoning code is not the appropriate place to do this, and more broadly than that, I do have more faith in the City Council, I think they've been deliberating this for a year, and they've hired an economic consultant who's engaging with them on this issue. I have more faith in that process being thoughtful and well-informed than something we can spin up on the dais here. So, I agree with the sentiment behind your desire of what you want, I think the best way to get that policy outcome is probably the process that the City Council's independently taking from us.
Yeah, I tend to agree.
Anyone else, any amendments, changes, ideas? Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. I do have one amendment to offer the Commission today. It is, came out of the City Council study session on Monday surrounding personal services in retail for residential zones as defined by the Lakewood Code. These are things like, like tailoring or, I know that there are many examples in the City Code that I have all left in my brain now, but tailoring, hairdressing, that kind of thing. So my motion, I move to add personal services to retail for residential zones as defined by the Lakewood Code from the hours of 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM, with the exception of coffee shops, which can open at 6:30 AM.
Do we need a second then?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Commissioner overall.
I like it.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams, I have a clarifying question about your proposal. So you said adding personal services to the retail that's allowed in RL zones, just to clarify, that's with the same rules and restrictions that would be with the retail in those zones? The same limitations?
Yes, and perhaps it requires a separate amendment for the coffee shop piece of this, and I'm happy to unpack that if that's helpful to the Chair, and I'm happy to do that in two separate amendments, if that's the correct procedure.
Yeah, I was writing down what you were saying quickly, it does feel like two amendments to you. I'll, if the motion maker and the second are agreeable to it, I'll make a friendly amendment that we strip out the coffee shop bit and consider that separately.
That's friendly.
Okay. Yeah, so the question is allowing personal services in the RL zone along with retail, but along also with the same limiting restrictions that retail is proposed to have. So my question for staff, for everyone's information, can you review for us what those limitations are for retail? And I guess my other question too is, do we have a definition of personal services so we know what it is that we're adding?
Yes, in the draft, the proposed limitations on retail and residential zones would include the retail use may occupy no more than 750 square feet, no parking is allowed in front of the structure, signage shall be limited to one unlit wall sign, no larger than 10 square feet, and actually, the unlit has not appeared in the draft, so we would ask maybe an additional amendment to add that back in because it disappeared from the draft that was published.
Yikes.
And then the operating hours that you've suggested.
Which was 7 to 9, I believe, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM?
That's correct, which I believe is consistent with the City Council's study session on Monday.
Yes.
Correct, yeah. And for context here, City Council did an unbinding vote on this on Monday, and I just felt like it would be, it would behoove us to just do it now, take that work off the hands of City Council and just do it ourselves.
Certainly, okay. And my other part of the question, Mr. Parker, Mr. Rice, I presume we do have a definition of personal services? What is it? What exactly are we adding with this amendment?
If you give me a minute, I will read it to you. It's in article 14.
I have it if you want me to read it.
Go ahead, Commissioner Gribbly-Unis.
I hope I got the right one. So personal services are an establishment engaged in providing individual services generally related to personal needs such as beauty and barber shops, spa services, shoe repair, nail saloons or salons. I've been at Leadville a lot lately, so. Dry cleaning, drop-off facilities and tailor shops. These uses may also include accessory retail sales of products related to the services provided.
Thank you, I totally want to go to a nail saloon now. But the definition says nail salon, to be clear, so I'm presuming. All right, any other questions or discussion? I think I'm good. All right, so we'll take a vote, yes vote will be in favor of adding this use. And that passes five I's, zero nays. Commissioner Williams, you want to make your motion for the other bit?
Yes, I came up here saying I had one amendment, and it turns out that it may be broken into a couple, so appreciate that. I move to make an exception to the hours of operations for retail and residential zones exclusively for the operation of coffee shops to allow them at 6:30 AM.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'm happy to help clarify the reasoning for this.
Go for it.
If that's helpful, especially for City Council, which may have some questions about this. Thought process here is that in, yeah?
May I?
Yeah.
So, I love the amendment, we don't have a definition for what a coffee shop is, so retail is retail, restaurant is restaurant, so if we, I'm not sure how to, how to, how to single out that one use from the use category.
Could we write a new definition for it and include it in the definition of personal services so that for all instances in the code other than this one narrow one, it's, it's?
No, we would, we would end up writing a definition specific for coffee shop, and then we've got to put it in the use chart, and then we've got to come up with parking standards and design standards. So it's beyond just the use, right? It's something more significant.
Chair, if I may, I appreciate you clarifying that, thank you very much. I am open to amending this amendment to open retail hours to be earlier. The thought process of City Council, of course, was that we don't want to have a lot of traffic in residential areas early in the morning before people may be awake, which I broadly agree with, right? The coffee shop issue is a little unique, it is a service and a business, of course, that you go to early in the morning, and in a free-market space, if you have one coffee shop in one area that's allowed to open at 6:30 and another coffee shop that is limited to 7:00 AM, you're sort of limiting the economic ability for that other coffee shop to compete, and I just don't think that it is the responsibility of government to be able to be preventing that kind of thing from happening. I'm open-minded to adjusting the hours from the previous motion to be earlier than 7:00 AM to account for this technicality. I doubt anyone is going to be practically going to a tailor at 6:30 in the morning, I think this likely only would apply to coffee shops that are only 700 square feet in a residential, like, there's a very specific use case for this. So I'm happy to adjust it to that as well, which would mean the motion is slightly different. I would love to hear any feedback from the Commissioners though before we, I withdraw and then re-move.
Absolutely. Commissioner overall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I think you could, we could have all personal services begin at 5:00 AM and there would not be some massive influx of traffic in those neighborhoods. I think 6:30 would be very reasonable, and I don't think it would cause a major problem, and it certainly wouldn't require the type of redo, kind of carte blanche redo that creating a new definition of a coffee shop as a permitted use would.
All right. Commissioner Williams, do you want to restate your motion?
Yes, do I need to withdraw it or restate?
Yes, go ahead and withdraw it and restate your new motion.
Yeah, counsel.
If we can withdraw the second and then withdraw the primary motion and then restate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who made the second? I think it was?
Withdrawn.
Thank you.
And I withdraw the motion.
Thank you. You may state your new motion.
I move to amend the hours for personal services to retail in, for residential zones as defined in the Lakewood Code to operate from the hours of 6:30 AM to 9:00 PM.
Second it.
So, sorry, that's personal service and retail?
Correct, personal service and retail.
Any discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second to change the code to allow both personal service and retail in RL zones from the hours of 6:30 to 9:00 PM, that's the change, keeping all the other restrictions pertinent to that zone and those uses the same. You should all be able to vote now, and that motion passes five I's, zero nays. All right, Commissioners, I will give you a warning that I have a number of other amendments before me, so I will dive into them, unless anyone else has anything else they want to offer first. Maybe before I do that, Commissioner Williams, go ahead.
Sorry, I was just going to motion for, I was going to, unless you have it on your list for the lighted signs piece of this?
That's not on my list, say what you want to say about litted signs.
Just flagging this technical piece, and, you know, counsel, I, flying by the seat of my pants here on this one, which I try not to do, I move to amend the zoning code to clarify that personal services and retail establishments in residential zones adjust the signage to ensure that the signage is not lit.
We have a motion and a second. I appreciate the motion, Commissioner Williams, I think Mr. Parker indicated that that would be fixed, but all the better to have a vote on the record, no? So, let's vote, a yes vote will require the signs to not be lit in the RL zone when we're talking about retail and personal service uses. That carries five I's, zero nays. All right. I think my first amendment is similar to that in that I think this is a typo and I think this is unintentional, but I will ask the question before I make the motion. Section 17.4.1.4, that's the beginning of Article 4, has a clause that is struck out in the current draft of the zoning ordinance. The clause once read, "City-owned land which is used or held for open space or park purposes shall not be permitted to be used for any other purpose other than open space or park purposes." I noticed this weekend when reviewing the code that this had been struck and out. Ironically, I went out of my way at the end of the last meeting to praise that this is something that was good in our zoning code and it was staying, and I was happy with that, but now it's gone for some reason. So I think this is a mistake, but I'd love a story of what happened here.
And I'm going to answer that, Chair Buckley, so this, if the Commission wants it to say that's fine, the reason why it was struck is because our city charter already requires that park that is held for park and open space must remain in park and open space, and that if the city wanted to somehow transfer, lease, sell or divest itself of park and open space, that would have to go to a vote of all the residents of the city. So, city charter already addresses this piece, we just felt that, since it was addressed elsewhere and our charter actually controls over the zoning code, that it was essentially redundant. If the Commission wants it to be kept in, there's really no harm, no foul.
Yes, certainly, I appreciate that, appreciate that, Ms. Danek. You know, I think sometimes it is okay to state things that are, you know, in the charter or, in analogy, you know, constitutionally protected, you know, I think there's all sorts of statutes out there that essentially, you know, codify some constitutional provision. I see that kind of as an analog to this. I mean, I presume there's no legal harm in keeping a provision in the zoning ordinance that specifically says this, is that right?
Nope, there's no legal harm in keeping it.
Yeah, so, I mean, to that end, you know, parks are really important to people in Lakewood and parks are really important to me, and it's okay to be redundant. And also, parks are really important to people in Lakewood and really important to me, and it's okay to be redundant. So I want to keep this provision in here. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion that we unstrike section 17.4.1.4.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Yeah, so, I mean, I, Lakewood is, I believe, approximately 25% parkland, it didn't get that way by accident, it got that way by, you know, decades of consistent policy and planning and being really clear that when we protect open space, that we mean it. And, you know, there's enough consternation in the community as we all had to make a very difficult decision about two weeks ago of what happens when development is near a park. It is extremely useful and reassuring, I think, to a large part of our community to say that, you know, in multiple places in our code, a park is a park and that's how it's going to stay, and so that's why I want this in here. With that, I'm seeing no other discussion, so let's take a vote. A yes will unstrike that provision. And that passes five I's, zero nays. My next amendments pertain, or possible amendment pertains to ADUs, a question to staff that is proceeding, it's, it's my understanding that the intent of our draft zoning is that an ADU, which the code says shall not be limited, or shall not exceed 1,400 square feet, that that limitation for a detached ADU is actually in excess of, you know, the limitation that's going to exist on home sizes in the RL zone. However, I have read this part of the code several times, and I don't actually see where or how the code or how the code requires that despite it being stated many times that that's the intention. And so I'm more worried about, you know, what the code actually says versus what our stated intentions are, because at the end of the day, what it says is what's going to control. So I don't know if staff can point me to the rationale exactly where the language is that spells this out for me.
The conflict, repeat where you're not understanding the 1,400 square foot limitation.
Okay. It's Section 14, 17.4.3.1A.4. It's the, you know, Use Chapter Supplemental Standards, ADUs are the first supplemental standard under A4.
It lists 1,400 square feet.
It lists 1,400 square feet as the maximum size of an ADU.
So, Mr. Buckley, I, so in Article 5, we have the maximum square feet of the primary structure.
Okay.
So, which is 3,250 or 3,000 or 2,500. ADU is defined as a detached...
It's an accessory.
Accessory structure.
Right, so if you wanted to build, like, today in the existing zoning, you could build something that's an attached ADU, but I guess with the new residential low-form zoning, that's really a concept that's going away. Like, an ADU is by default detached.
Yep, because you're allowed more than one unit in the primary building, so we don't need a definition of an internal ADU, right?
Got it. Yeah, that makes sense. So that is the rationale for how, you know, if I had a lot and assuming I could fit geometrically on a lot within all the setback limits and the height limits and the open space limits, and I had a primary house that was under 2,500 square feet, say like, say 2,400, so really close to the limit, I could also build an ADU that was, you know, 1,350. I'm under both limits, I'm good.
Correct.
Okay, because they're detached. If I attached them, then it would be not allowed, but if there's detached, there's room on the lot for that to fit, it's allowed based on that rationale.
Yeah, you can't add 1,400 on to the primary structure above the limit, but within that limit, you could have multiple units.
Okay. I think, yeah, that logic of how that is the code and what it requires makes sense to me, so I think, my only other question there then, the 1,400 square feet of gross floor area, I guess there's a question of whether we want that to be above-grade area in the same way that the limitation on the RL primary buildings is above grade. But I don't know, for accessory structure, I don't know if I care about that distinction as much, and there's probably not going to be a lot of ADUs with basements anyway. I don't know if commissioners have thoughts on that. I think we're good then. Okay, so that, I'll move on. On the topic of ADUs, since I'm there, in ADAT 7, we are requiring parking in limited circumstances. I have a two-part question there. Firstly, what is the actual parking requirement? You know, because the parking table right now says that the parking requirement is one space per thousand square foot above the first 4,000 square feet, and so an ADU is always going to be less than that. So does that actually mean there's no parking required for an ADU even though we have code saying parking is required?
So as to what would be required per certain square footage, I'll divert to planning, but I will let you know that this language in Section, subsection 7, this is directly from the state legislation. So the state wanted to account for these very limited circumstances where in A, if there was already an existing driveway, garage, tandem parking space, et cetera, or B, if basically one of those three, excuse me, all those three conditions exist, like there's no other parking alternatives, either existing off-street parking is in a zone that requires one or more parking spaces for the primary dwelling unit or is located on a block where on-street parking is prohibited. So that language is directly from the state legislation.
All of it, including the stuff about the on-street parking being prohibited and, yeah, and I noticed that actually pretty closely mirrored, but was not the same as the language that this body recommended and council adopted maybe two years ago. So before the ADU bill passed at the state level, to add to it, right? So did we, did we really get that close here in Lakewood to what the state decided on?
It was, it was pretty close, because I think all of you were contemplating situations where there was no existing off-street parking opportunity or streets that, you know, disallowed it for whatever reason, they were, you know, just didn't allow parking. So that was, I remember the discussion, that was exactly where this body was going, was what do we do if there's a situation where there simply isn't parking on the street?
Okay. So my understanding then, Ms. Danek, is that we are closely adhering to, you know, what the state statute is laying out specifying limited circumstances, not probably most circumstances, but limited circumstances where an ADU would have a parking requirement. Is that right?
Very limited circumstances. I think most ADUs probably aren't going to meet all of these criteria in the city, but there may be circumstances where...
Where they do.
Where they do.
Okay. And so then to our planning staff, so we have this provision that says in these limited circumstances, there is parking required. How much is required?
So in the current code, we don't require parking for single-family structures.
Correct.
The way that we translated that in the new code where we're measuring by square footage is exempting the first 4,000 square feet, because we have provisions that allow in this low-form residential buildings to get up to close to 4,000 square feet as single-family homes. So right now, the way it's written is the first 4,000 square feet of home doesn't require anything, over that would require. And we could make it more explicit, but the way that, I think the intent was to calculate that is the total square footage on the lot of residential.
Right. Okay, so the lot, so if you had an ADU and like a one primary home, even in that limited circumstance where parking, the code says is required, like, you could have a 2,400 square foot home, that's to the code, and you could have a 1,300 square foot ADU, that's to the code, and then that adds up to 2,700 or no, 3,700 square feet, which is less than 4,000, and so you're in the limited circumstance where parking is required and the parking requirement is zero.
Right. Versus, yeah, and the B, you could have a 3,000 square foot home and a 1,400, so yeah, you could get above that 4,000.
Okay.
Commissioner Buckley?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
The ADU provisions were left in the ordinance to actually comply with the state requirements. It was the way, the way that we put the ordinance together, you could do, we, Lakewood didn't have to have ADUs because they allowed more than one structure or more than one unit. The state actually came out with their standards specific to ADU, so our initial draft actually didn't even have accessory dwelling units as a, as an option in the code. And then when we got the final bill, we put these in so that we are compliant with the state law.
Okay. And would we still be compliant with the state law, Ms. Danek, if this parking requirement was not in there? Like, if we were more liberal than the state law and didn't require parking even in those limited circumstances, would that comply, or do we have to have this provision?
No, you can, if the body wants to be, as you put it more, as you put it more liberal with the parking requirements, that's fine, because the way that the states reads, it says parking may be required.
Got it.
If the following conditions apply. I think they were essentially writing in a carve-out, but if there are jurisdictions who want to adopt ADU provisions and not require any parking type, certainly that's something that's, that's allowed.
Well, I guess I'll float this to see what the commission thinks. I think I'm open to, yeah, I'll do it. I'll offer a motion to strike Section 17.4.3.1.8.7. That's the passage that requires the ADU parking in the limited circumstances where there's, there's no available on-street parking and, you know, Ms. Danek can elaborate on that, but it seems like, like, we've already kind of, in most cases, worked down to our requirement's zero anyway, so it just seems like more streamlined and simpler for everyone if, if we just don't even have the language, is, I guess, where my rationale on that is. And makes it a little bit easier to build a detached ADU, too, which I think has virtue. So that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Williams.
I just, you love, you know how I love to seek clarity here.
Go for it.
Just to be clear then, this would mean that we don't have any parking requirements for any ADUs in the city of Lakewood. Is that correct?
That would be the intent of the motion, yes.
Great, well, then I'm a yes.
Any other discussion? All right, let's start voting. Cast your votes. So a yes vote will delete the ADU parking requirement in the limited circumstances where it is required, and that passes five i's, zero nays. Okay, this is possibly a bigger discussion, and I apologize to the commission and the public. I intended to come with a lot more preparation and work on this issue, but I just, I simply didn't have time, so I'm going to try to advance this idea the best I can right now. I'm going to say this is an idea that is inspired by a public comment we heard two weeks ago relevant to the 777 South Yarrow project. We had an ecologist from up in Fort Collins come down and speak to us about bird deaths flying into windows of buildings, and I've done a lot of research into that issue since then. It is indeed a big ecological problem, and, you know, of course, it's, you know, we can't go and retroactively, you know, apply new zoning rules to projects that are already in the development pipelines, so we all know that this wouldn't apply to that project or any other in-progress projects, but for future projects, we could certainly add rules. You know, the research that that gentleman came up with and told us about, Commissioner Gribble, you and I after the meeting and some independent research I did online, seemed to suggest that, like, bird-safe windows, they're windows that essentially a bird can see and therefore not fly into and kill itself, are maybe about $2 to $4 more expensive per square foot of window area compared to like a normal window, which ranges from about $15 to $30 per square foot, so it's a, it's an extra cost, but I think for the ecological value and then the sustainability value, this could be an idea that has merit. So I might offer up an idea that's for any building greater than or equal to, oh, yeah, I move that for any building greater than or equal to three stories in height that's within any, within 500 feet of any park or body of water, that a bird-safe window glass be offered. And I will clarify that Ms. Danek also helpfully emailed me some definitions of like what a bird-safe material for a window is earlier today, so I don't know exactly the language I would want to use, but this is a motion to incorporate the concept into the next draft of the zoning ordinance, and I think Ms. Danek has possibly started using some definitions that can lay the groundwork of what kind of materials he used. So if there's a second, we'll discuss further and we can ask her questions.
I second.
All right, we have a second. All right, everyone's lights went on at once. Fabulous. Let's start with Commissioner Gribble.
Thank you, Chair. To be honest with you, I'm not prepared to support this without doing a lot of research on my own. While I do support the general idea of it, I, you know, being in the industry, I'm not incredibly familiar with what the actual implications from a cost standpoint is. I know I did some preliminary looking into this previously, but a Google search for pricing versus talking to contractors who actually would be doing the installations of this would be important, I think, to really use the cost as a justification for it not being a burden. The other element, which I'm not prepared to talk to, is, you know, how long do these bird-safe windows last? What's the maintenance cost of these? Who's doing the maintenance on that? So there, there's just potentially, there's too many unknowns for me to feel comfortable without doing a lot more research on my own. I think that's all I'm trying to say.
Okay, I appreciate that. Commissioner, overall.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, what's the magic in three stories? Where do you come with that?
This is inspired by the commenter, Mr. Michael Pardo, last week, who said that the issue of birds striking windows on buildings is most pronounced with taller buildings near places where birds congregate. And so I intentionally worded my motion to be at least a three-story building. I think that's a, beginning to be a taller building. And I said within 500 feet of a park or body of water, because I think those are places where birds are most likely to congregate.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sort of generally supportive of this, and I, well, Chair, my mother called me about the fact that we approved a building that could harm birds as a bird enthusiast. So, you know, the call's coming from inside the house as it wa, as it were for me, but I, my question is, with the 500 feet, within 500 feet of any park or body of water with 25% of Lakewood being parkland...
Fair.
How are we certain what a number of buildings are, would be impacted by this? Like, how much of Lakewood's land, like, land in terms of higher density this would impact?
That's an excellent question, and the honest answer to that is no. I've not done any sort of rigorous analysis of how much this would impact, right?
Yeah.
So I think that's an important thing to know, and, I mean, it doesn't, maybe doesn't help my motion, but I think it does speak to Commissioner Gribble, you and I's point that, you know, more research on this idea is needed, right? And so I'll frankly acknowledge that while also saying that I think that the planning commission tonight does not need to come up with the final answer. The, you know, the city council, my understanding, is continuing to look at this and tweak this. They, you know, if we were to adopt this motion tonight, we've laid the groundwork for an idea that they can consider. I understand that they're meeting for another workshop to discuss this whole zoning draft on June 2nd. If we pass this, I imagine it would come up as a topic of discussion. You know, staff could provide some input. If the idea's there, we could tweak the 500-feet number, we could tweak the three-story building number, you know, we could learn more about cost data if, you know, if we're advancing the idea. You know, I believe the council's current schedule is not to have first and second reading of this zoning ordinance until about August timeframe, so I would humbly suggest that there's still some time to do that additional research. You know, if, you know, this is, this is a motion to put the idea into the code and to, you know, respectfully request staff and the council to, you know, that this is something that, the commission wants this general idea in the code, and I don't have exact language for, you know, what the code actually says or, you know, where it goes, what section or article, but, you know, it's more for a general idea.
Can I ask a follow-up?
Go for it.
I appreciate that. I'm sort of reacting in real time here. I'm curious if we, if we have many higher-density buildings, well, okay, it's my understanding that many residential neighborhoods would have a 45-foot limit on buildings, which is higher than three stories. I'm curious if we could make it where it only applies to buildings over 45 feet, which would allow us to make, this would then only apply to, you know, true taller buildings, right, as opposed to sort of this, and it would then allow for denser housing to be built in these areas that we desperately need it and avoid sort of this potential limiting, right? Because I'm more concerned about limiting our, hamstringing our own ability to build denser housing with something like this. So I'm curious if there's a way that we could do it where it only applies to buildings over, over that 45-foot height limit, so it doesn't sort of impact the immediate need to build denser housing in these areas, but addresses it for taller buildings, which this would still apply to the South Yarrow property, I mean, if it were to be proposed in the future, right? It would still apply to a development like that, but not to fourplexes or, you know, multifamily units in other neighborhoods. I don't know, I'm sort of reacting to this in real time. I'm curious the thoughts there from commission or from staff and council.
Sure. Yeah, I'm open, maybe, to amendment to consider a 45-foot height limit. You know, I certainly recognize, maybe, there's an elegant, if that's the threshold, there's an elegance if that's the threshold, because the mid-form residential allows a building up to that height, and so it's only the mixed-use zones that allow a taller height, and so that somewhat more constrains it and makes it more... that somewhat more constrains it and makes it more understandable of, like, we know exactly, or at least more limited based on the map where it would be. So I think I'm open to that. You know, you didn't say it, but I think, I think I'm also, I apologize for my phone. I think I'm also, yeah, open to, you know, tweaking the offset from the park or what size park we're talking about. Again, this is primarily to, you know, get something on staff and council's radar. Commissioner O'Neill.
Thank you, Chair. So does staff have any experience with this kind of a product? Have you seen it used?
No.
Okay. I think that I would like more feedback on what sort of heights, from some, from someone who studies this, on what sort of heights we're talking about, because even 45 feet seems a little bit low to me. I would think six stories or seven, I mean, I could see the upper stories of a building, I could be supportive of that, or whatever the data kind of tells us is the most dangerous to that type of wildlife. But in addition, I would be, I would like more information on the maintenance. Commissioner Gribble-Yunis touched on all of the things, you know, the cost, if we want rents to stay lower, this sounds pretty pricey, honestly, if we're talking per square foot, $3 to $4. There's a lot of windows in most of these buildings. So I guess, you know, it's kind of starts to become that push and pull of affordability. And in addition to that, what happens, you know, does this stuff start to peel off in the sun? What happens then? Is it a code enforcement thing where somebody has to complain about? I don't know. I mean, like, what, how, how, how does this work, I guess? But I'm intrigued by it, and I could be supportive of it.
Yeah, I, thank you. I'm, by no means am I an expert in this material, but from the limited research I've conducted, the material is, like, integral with the window and the manufacturing process, so I don't know if there's a concern of it peeling off. Like, it's, like, one of the designs is just like, you know, like colored dots, like integral within the glass, right? And so it's not just a solid transparent piece of glass, but there's actually, like, a texture or color difference, like, integral to the glass that, that a bird can see and tell that that's a solid object and not, like, more of the sky, right? So I, I don't know for sure, but it would seem to me that, like, the treatment wearing off with time is less likely, but there could still be maintenance component, I totally acknowledge that. Commissioner Gribble-Yunis.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Again, I just want to say, I like this idea. I'm just not comfortable and don't know enough about the product. Thinking about the reflectivity of glass, I don't understand how beyond just a colored dot on the inside, like in the sandwich between a double-pane glass, I see how that could be one method for a bird seeing it, but the exterior pane is still going to be reflective because it's a solid sheet of glass. So then I know there's also products that are applied to the exterior face, but that is exposed to UV. And so again, I mean, I just have a lot of questions in my own head of if I was required to use this product, that I would have to go through this, this process to really vet it. And I guess the other thing I'm not sure about is from, I guess this is a question for council, are, I guess, are we allowed to tell people that they have to use a certain product on their windows? And if yes, then does the city take on any responsibility for what the product is? And we would have to be very specific as to what we're telling them to use?
I was going to say, I'll start the question, and then I'm going to defer to Mr. Rice. Just generally, and Mr. Rice is going to have a lot more expertise in this, we do have the ability with some of the design standards to specify the material types, like you'll notice in some parts of the zoning code, we talk about wood versus, you know, metal versus steel versus you can't use, you know, this type of siding. So he'll discuss that, but after he answers that question, I think each of us have a comment about this topic that I just want to get in before we move on as well.
Sure.
And as I'm kind of listening, because I've done a little research as we were looking at the project that we, that we heard last week, actually, I'll start off with a personal example. I live in a little mid-century modern, huge windows out on the patio. I think I've killed three or four birds, just, and I'm in a single-story building, right? And the windows are probably four to six feet wide and eight feet tall, and it's difficult for the birds to see them. If you're thinking of something that's an apartment building with patios, right? So the window itself is recessed into the patio, you've got a railing on the bottom, and then you've got overhangs. And so the window and the glare that you're talking about, what the bird sees, it's going to change. One, it'll change throughout the day, so depending on which elevation of the building is exposed will influence. I'm not sure that I would come in and say a three- or four-story building with typical smaller residential windows needs bird glass. It's, I think it would be elevation-specific, and then it may have something to do with the size of the window itself. When I think of this, there's a building at Colorado and I-25, and it is, I can't remember, I think it's called the Icon Building. It's a sheet of, it's a mirror, right? So when you look at it, that's all you see is whatever's behind it, sky-wise. It's kind of, one, it's a traffic hazard, and I imagine it's a, it's a hazard for birds as well, because it reflects the sky. And so I, going back to Commissioner Gribble-Yunis's comment, I would, you would also, almost need to list a specific product, which I don't think we want to do, because technology changes, to get what you're after, and then you need to be specific. Is it, is it a specific window size? Is it an elevation? Do you look at patterns or species? There's a whole lot that goes into this, because it's, the development review team will have to apply this standard, and I'm not sure how I would do that if, if you made the amendment and it's something in the ordinance that now we have to come through and evaluate each project. Additionally, think of, if everybody's familiar with Mountain Air Park, that's up in Ward 2, 500 feet and three stories, which was kind of the initial proposal, that would affect a huge number of properties. It'd affect all the townhomes at, or most of the townhomes at Illinois West's project. There's a new project that's kind of under review, I think it's about four or five stories. So the, the distance and the size itself would be fairly significant as well. I used Mountain Air because it was fairly recognizable and fairly large, but there are a lot of small parks, too. So think of, think of that and then the ramifications, and Commissioner Williams' comment, 25% of Lakewood, it's significant, especially when you, it's not, the park is one big piece, right? It's spread out, so that kind of amplifies the request as well.
Okay. Commissioner Williams, did you have more?
Yeah, I just have been sort of looking through this as we've been talking here, and from some quick research, this is, this is something that other municipalities have considered, right? From what I can understand, they are, there is such thing as bird-safe glazing on facade. Most of these municipalities require it on developments that are immediately adjacent to public land or park, or open space or parkland. So I think, I don't know that we have the votes to actually pass such a thing here now, today, but I would say that what we could consider in the future would be something that is more intentional to directly adjacent to parkland or to open space, and something that is perhaps rooted in best practices from other municipalities. I think, like, that's kind of my other question here, which is, you know, what is, you know, where have we seen this before and how has it impacted those areas? I hesitate to do something that would impact our ability to create denser housing in the immediate, right? Like, I kind of view that as a crisis, and I, I understand the need to protect wildlife and birds and all of these things, and I think that we may need to sort of figure out what a best practice looks like here, instead of sort of, like, moving quickly to put it in. My other question would be, is there a way to come back and add this either through code or zoning or what have you later on? Like, let's say we adopt this process, can we do, like, a little study? Can we find out more information? And then revisit, like, I wouldn't want this to hold up our whole zoning rework for this one thing.
Yeah, understand. I'll let staff answer the question of, like, a process for later. Oh.
Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. I did not realize that.
Yeah. Commissioner Gribble-Yunis, I think you were not, yeah, I think you had the floor when staff was answering your question, I called on Commissioner Williams. We'll go back to Commissioner Gribble-Yunis first, my apologies, sir.
Thank you, Chair. But this does piggyback on what Commissioner Williams was just saying. I was going to say, we don't necessarily need to solve this and have specifics, and I guess my understanding is we can't direct staff to, to look into this. But I guess what I'd throw back to you, Chair, is, is a potential path, maybe altering the motion just for Planning Commission to recommend to City Council that planning staff does additional study as to the potential implementation of protecting wildlife adjacent to parks within the zoning code?
I would be happy to amend my motion in such a way.
Okay.
Ms. Danik, I believe you said you had comments, and I've not heard you make extensive ones yet.
Yeah, I just wanted to add a couple of comments, and I think Mr. Parker may have some as well. One thing I just want the commission to think about with a concept like this is whether there are any carve-outs saved for, like, affordable housing, if they would have to adhere to this requirement. Another comment that I, when I started to look into this topic for Chair Buckley, and I will provide that to the rest of the commission as well, I did, I did notice that other municipalities have examined this issue specifically, to give you an idea about, one example, about how it was incorporated, the city of Denver actually had adopted their 2021 International Green Construction Code, the IGCC. They actually added to that, there's, there's a chapter about site sustainability, so this is not actually in the IGCC. They did a local amendment to add essentially provisions about bird-safe glass. Ultimately, though, it was a, it was not a requirement, it was essentially an option for developers to pursue in the IGCC. So I can certainly provide that example, because they have been dealing with that. But my, my bigger ask was just to think about if there would be any exempt properties, you know, like I said, like affordable housing, or, or, and is that completely affordable properties, or, you know, a portion thereof, or basically what that would look like. But I think Mr. Parker also had a comment as well.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Well, my comment might be moot with that last suggestion. I appreciate the suggestion of, you know, giving staff the instruction to work on this for a while. I think, I think we could do that and come back with something either by the time council digs into this in July, or if, if it becomes more, more complicated than that, then we could come back, you know, immediately after the adoption of the ordinance with something specific to this. But, yeah, my, my two thoughts, if we don't go that direction and do decide to move forward with something tonight, you know, we are, there are a couple of changes in the code already for properties adjacent to parks over 10 acres, and that was designed to be parks with, you know, a significant nature component, because we have a lot of pocket parks, a lot of urban parks, that this, that wouldn't necessarily be needed or appropriate. So I think aligning it with that change might, might work well. And then just a question, Chair, on your intent. So if there's a, if there's a trigger, a building height trigger, whether it's more than three stories or more than 45 feet, there's a trigger where a building suddenly has this, this applied, does triggering that requirement mean that the windows for the whole building have to be bird-proof, or the, or the windows above that height limit?
That's a great question. I think I was envisioning the whole building, but I can see reasonable folks requiring it maybe only over the height threshold, or over some other height, over the trigger threshold. And so I guess my response to that is it's, you know, if, if the commission passes a motion to have this be looked into further by staff and by City Council, that is, can certainly be a research area. Ms. Danik, just a question about the way Denver has implemented this. You know, you mentioned their, their green building infrastructure guidelines. Is that something that's, I know it's elective in Denver to use this material, is that something somewhat analogous to our enhanced development menu?
Not really. So it's, how they've done it is, the 2021 suite of international codes, Denver has passed many more of them than the city of Lakewood. So we, for instance, to my knowledge, don't have the International Green Construction Code.
Got it.
Yeah, no, okay, I'm seeing head nods that we do not. And so they, when they passed that particular code in the 2021 suite, they then actually added a number of things within that. So it actually is governed under their, their building codes there.
Got it.
But, so we, you know, again, and that's something that the city could explore, the city could explore, as Mr. Parker suggested, maybe including something, you know, within the parks that are 10 acres or more, or including it somewhere else in the design standards. I mean, I think there's ways to fit it in, but they did it a little bit differently.
Okay. Yeah, no, that, that's all fine. Commissioner O'Neill, you seconded my motion, so I'm going to restate the motion. I'd like you to let me know if you're, if you're good with my restated motion. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that staff and City Council explore adding a provision to the draft zoning ordinance to require windows made out of bird-friendly materials to be required for any building greater than or equal to 45 feet in height, and that is directly adjacent to a park over 10 acres.
Second.
All right, so that's just for clarity, that's different than my first motion in that it's, it's just a recommendation that council and staff, you know, explore this. I think everything this body does legislatively is a recommendation at the end of the day anyway, but just clarifying, this is just a recommendation to begin exploring an idea, increasing the height from three stories to 45 feet. That would have the elegant benefits since, you know, everything with a height limit over 45 feet is all in mixed-use zones, that we know the zones where it would apply to, and rather than the 500-foot buffer is directly adjacent to, and rather than any park, just a park over 10 acres, which I think it's also reasonable to say that it's probably our parks that are larger in size, such as 10 acres, that are going to gather more birds and have more water on them, where birds are attracted and such like that. So those are the differences from my initial one, and we do have a second from Commissioner O'Neill on that. Is there any more discussion or questions? All right, so we'll take a vote on making this recommendation that staff and council explore it further. All right, and that motion carries five ayes, zero nays. Thank you all for humoring my, my big idea. I acknowledge it's not well-defined yet, but we can begin a process of defining it and see where that process takes us. Okay, moving on to the residential low-form district. I know we've said it many times, that our intent is to have the square footage maximum, but regulating being above grade, i.e. excluding basements. I have a question for staff. You know, what exactly is below grade? Like, what, what is a split-level home? You know, what is a garden-level apartment? Is that below grade? Is it at-grade for purposes of this? It was not clear.
Right, and I actually asked that question. I don't have the exact number for you, but it's, the building code defines foundation and then livable space, and I can't remember if the foundation can't project more than two or project more than four feet above grade, but anything above four is, is not, no longer foundation. So I could clarify that, but it's part of the building code.
Okay. And so maybe the building code contains the, the answer I was looking for.
It does.
But, yeah, similar to my, my question about ADUs, where does it say, you know, But yeah, similar to my question about ADUs, where does it say, you know, what the square footage limit is? You know, again, I didn't see anywhere in the zoning draft where explicitly said that that, you know, maximum building size is maximum building size of at or above-grade square footage. So I didn't see code that explicitly excludes the basements are below-grade stuff. And so how do we know it's actually happening if the code doesn't say it?
I think that is something that we need to clarify more in this code, and we can do that and will do that.
Okay.
For the next draft.
Well, I appreciate that. Well, I'll suggest then we could just add the words "above-grade square footage" to the relevant tables in Section 17.5 that discuss the maximum square footage.
Yes.
Yeah, that's agreeable to you? Okay. And just to be super clear, I'll even make that a motion. I move that the language in the table specifying maximum square footage in the RL zone, the words "above-grade" be inserted to the phrase, you know, "maximum square footage" to clarify that we're talking about above ground and excluding basements. That's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? All right, cast your votes. Yes vote clarifies in the tables that it's above-ground grade. That passes five ayes, zero nays. Okay. I'm going to bring up another topic that might have some more conversation. Maybe this one will go better for me. For lot sizes in the, I guess it's the RLC district now, we have a minimum lot size of 3,000 square feet. This Commission has passed, talked in the past of an idea of an R1-Zero zone, of no minimum lot size. 3,000 is getting pretty small. Conceptually, the way that a zero square foot minimum lot size would work is that we still have an open space requirement, we still have front and side and rear setback requirements, we still have a height, maximum height requirement, and we still have the maximum square footage, the building requirement. You know, so I think all those things kind of force a certain envelope where you can't practically get lower than a site. But I think just getting rid of that 3,000-square-foot minimum in the RLU zone could give, like, subdividers more creativity and flexibility to possibly add more homes, to do more creative and innovative and nice design treatments on it, and protecting what's really essential, right? The height to keep the character of the neighborhood, the building size to keep the character of the neighborhood, the open space requirement keeps the character of the neighborhood. I think, you know, the lot size could arguably just be one more restriction that has a net effect on making things more difficult. And so I don't know, I'll toss out the idea, is there appetite for going lower or eliminating the lot sizes in some of the RL, in the RLU district specifically, or the RLC, we're calling it now? Commissioner Gribble-Unis?
Thank you, Chair. I have the appetite for exploring that further. I know there was discussion on this at previous meetings, and there was a justification as to why 3,000 was the minimum, and that going lower wouldn't have any functional impact. But I still have a hard time, well, frankly, remembering that conversation. But also, you know, I very much am on the same page with Chair when it comes to these minimum dimensional setbacks that will, you know, assure a livable condition that meets the community. So I guess that's, the question is, why 3,000? And am I remembering correctly that there was something about no functional difference of going lower than that?
And I think that was a discussion that took place with our consultant.
Yes.
So I don't know that I can necessarily encapsulate all their arguments. I think the thought was 3,000 square feet was the lowest that was practicable and relatable to the existing context that said staff is, staff has no problem going lower to zero or whatever you think is appropriate.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm curious if this, first of all, yes is the answer to your initial question, is there appetite for this? I would be very supportive of eliminating lot sizes. I'm curious if that should be paired with an amendment around setbacks? Do we need to, because if functionally you can't make anything lower than 3,000 feet or smaller than 3,000 square feet because of our setbacks and our other open space requirements, do we need, should we be considering adjusting that as well? It's like a genuine question. I don't have the answer to.
Yeah, I see.
And you still had the floor, didn't you? And we took it away a second time.
Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Gribble-Unis.
Totally fine.
God almighty.
Apologize.
The things you're bringing up are great. I just want to talk to your point. I think, yeah, like talking about the setbacks in relationship to what a zero lot would be appropriate. But I mean, I do think going less than 3,000 using current setbacks could still create a functional, a functional residence. What that actually looks like would take a lot more study, but there's, in my mind, no harm in just eliminating that minimum and seeing what the market produces. But we could look into it further as to reducing them, but then I guess we get into this gray area, or not gray area, but like it's almost like creating a whole new zone district that would be for some very small, specific type of building versus just saying, well, whatever you can fit within these setbacks to make sure everyone's got the right amount of space and maintains the neighborhood character is, I guess, the easier, quick direction, if that makes sense.
Right. Commissioner O'Neill?
Thank you, Chair. I believe this is where we landed the last time we talked about the zero lot line, was studying, I think you did a massing study, actually, of 3,000 feet or, I don't know, I don't remember how you did it, but it was to study whether or not the setbacks were appropriate with zero lot lines. And I don't think that we ever answered it. That's my recollection.
Right, yeah, I do recall Commissioner Gribble-Unis presenting to the Commission once a kind of a mock-up study he did of dimensional requirements in a zero lot, a zero lot minimum size requirement zone district. Maybe Commissioner Gribble-Unis, you could speak to some of your findings. You did it, you probably remember them better than the rest of us.
What I vaguely remember, I feel like that was forever ago, it's probably just a few months, but...
I think about two years, actually.
That study was in relationship to the existing minimum lot size, I think. But we really didn't, it didn't bring us to any conclusions, just saying like, this is what the current setbacks would allow you to do. And yeah, you were able to break up like a 7,000-square-foot lot into a bunch of smaller residences, but it was by no means a comprehensive or market study.
If I may interject, because I did remember something. As you were doing that, so I can't remember exactly how you phrased it, but I remember the term proportional. So you took the existing zoning and then you adjusted it by 50% and then 50% again. And so not only did the lot size get smaller, but the setback got smaller, right? So I can't remember the math exactly, but it was a third and a third and a third until it almost didn't work, because then you were getting at a level where you have to have, you've got to be able to get through a door right into a, into a space. But do you recall that? Because you adjusted things...
That's a great memory. You're spot on. And yeah, it was just like we just did arbitrary reductions just to see what the potential effect would be.
Yeah. And I guess my intent with this idea, I will say, is that we would also wouldn't change like the maximum size of a building. But I did notice like in the RLC building already in the draft code, there's a five-foot side setback, but a provision that it could be zero if there's another building right on the lot line, right? So I interpreted that to be something like you could split a duplex down the middle, fee simple. Mr. Rice is shaking his head. Right? So doing something like that with like a zero lot size, I wonder if there's, like, are we unlocking a potential, you know, within the constraints of our square foot limitations for something like a, you know, something kind of like a townhome that's like, you know, square footage-wise, it really wouldn't be more than like maybe a threeplex or something, just based on the practical limitations of that. But that's actually kind of the intent, like that, just allowing that as a form that can be fee simple split a little bit more easily without the, well, I guess we could have, still have like a lot with issues too. And so I don't know, it could be something we look at, but that was one idea behind my suggestion. Anyways, Commissioner Williams?
Can I just ask, practically speaking, what would we need to reduce setbacks for if we were to pursue something like this is the first part? And then the second part would be, is there a way to do it where we would apply this change in setback requirements exclusively to lots that are under 3,000 square feet? Is that something we could consider? I don't know even who could answer that question, but...
Sure. I brought up the topic, so I'll try to answer what my thought process is. I think first of all, Commissioner Williams, you have the right to ask us to consider anything you'd like. So, but what I'm asking us to consider, I guess, is it's still buildings that are, yes, on more compact pieces of land, and therefore, you know, land being a big overhead cost, you know, more affordable to build due to the small lot size, and preferably very set up to easily be fee simple ownership, since we've talked a lot about the importance of ownership housing, all those things. And also trying to keep this in character with other things in the neighborhood. And so we've defined kind of what the architectural characteristics of existing lots are based on things like setbacks and, you know, things like height limits and so forth. And so also kind of envisioning, and at least in my offering this up, that we wouldn't really change those dimensions, and I would want to hold them because those are dimensions that have kind of been long established as, you know, kind of establishing the general scale between buildings and so forth. So for keeping that kind of consistency, that's my vision of it anyways. You know, I don't think I actually made a motion around this. So maybe just for perfect clarity, I will, I will make the motion to change the minimum lot size table for the RLC zone, that was the former urban context, to zero square feet from 3,000 square feet. And if, yeah, I'll make that the motion.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second discussion. As the motion maker, I will ask you, Commissioner Gribble-Unis, one more time. Yeah, if we keep all the dimensional requirements the same as they are, you know, you're the architect on the Commission, does this get us something? Are we getting a lot for dropping this requirement? I intuitively think we could, but maybe we're not, and it might not be worth, like, it may not be worth exploring more if there's not a lot of there there, you know?
I mean, the potential, I mean, it's just going to depend on the market's need for what we always, I guess, refer to as the missing middle housing. So, you know, one of the first expenses a developer's going to have to go through is purchasing the land, putting a house on a 10,000-square-foot lot, the same house versus a 5,000-square-foot lot, one's going to be cheaper than the other. So there's logic that states as long as you could build a functional residence, a two-bed, one-bath house that Lakewood used to be predominantly made of, I guess, in some neighborhoods, you know, that comes in around like 650 square feet, and you just don't see any of those houses being built today.
Right.
It just doesn't exist. And I just have to assume that it's because in order for that to be economically viable, it would just be so outrageously expensive per square foot. So I'm hopeful that by eliminating the minimum lot size, you're creating the opportunity, or at least the potential for a house of that type or size to actually be marketable or financially viable for a, we usually say developer, but a spec home builder, or frankly, anyone who wants to build their own house. This isn't just for developers, it's for all of us.
Sure. Okay. So there's possibilities, I guess, I'm hearing.
Yeah.
You know, I did say some of this is to encourage ownership housing, of course, as affordably as possible. A question for staff, and you know, of course, zoning can never regulate who owns something, just how it's used. We all acknowledge that general principle. You know, one thing that the current draft does is it legalizes cottage courts, right? Multiple primary buildings and has those being smaller sizes. And so you could have, you know, a large lot that you, you put like now two or three 1,800-square-foot maximum buildings as the current requirement written into the code on them. Those are all on the same lot, just based on, I don't know, experience of other places that do this, or the practicalities of how you envision a development application process would run. You know, what would ownership of that likely look like? Are these cottage courts rentals, or could they be fee simple even if they're on the same lot? You know, or ownership? Or does it really depend, like a lot of other things?
It could be done either way. So, yeah, that somebody could build them and own the lot and the houses and rent them out. You could do a condo plat so that you could sell those individually.
Okay. So, yeah, would detached cottage homes like necessarily have to involve like an HOA or condo board under any rules like that, or some common association? Or could it just be a condo plat and not much more coordination beyond that, right? And I'm also thinking about the liability laws around condos, although I understand they very recently changed with the legislature, and I have not looked into that law at all, but I heard about it.
Yeah, for construction defects?
Yeah.
That generally kicks in where you have an HOA. I mean, if you've got two or three buildings on a condo plat, that probably isn't an issue.
Right? Okay. So, yeah, so that's just another context, I guess, for the Commission to be mindful of, that there's, besides small lot sizes, there's other mechanisms for maybe achieving the same thing, with the caveat that, you know, the multiple primary buildings on a lot, as envisioned in the code right now, has a hard maximum building size of 1,800 square feet, whereas the, you know, the primary buildings just by themselves are 2,500 square feet and up in the three zones. So that could be good and bad, right? It could be good because it's a smaller, more affordable building. It could be bad because maybe it's just not as economically viable, so it won't happen as much. We might not know until, until we try it both ways, right? But again, I'm seeing no other hands raised, so I think we've talked about this as much. So there is, there is a motion on the floor to reduce to zero square feet the minimum lot size just in the RLC zone. So if you are in favor of that, you can vote yes now, and if you are against that, vote Okay, we just talked about smaller lot sizes. I'm actually, I actually have an amendment in the opposite direction as well. This is responsive to some of the concerns we've heard from the equestrian community about wanting some sort of legal protection for larger lots, where you can keep large animals, where you can keep horses, and keep the character where we have these bigger properties. Like, you know, we heard our neighbor from Kiwanis Gardens earlier tonight, we've heard concerns in neighborhoods like Iber. I know there's neighborhoods that exist all over the city, you know, Weir Gulch Gardens, you know, some of the properties west of Belmar Park. There's horses in lots of places in the city. And so we're trying to, with this motion, I'm going to be trying to balance a couple of things, right? We absolutely want more homes, more of these missing middle housing types, you know, but I think we can, we can balance that in a way where we have these very small lot sizes and these missing middle forms with preserving larger properties. And so my suggestion of how to do that is I would amend the minimum lot size table in 17.5.2, just with a footnote specifying that in any RL zone, a lot may not be subdivided smaller than... smaller than 15,000 square feet if the property has been used for the keeping of large animals pursuant to 17.4.3C for any continuous period of at least six months in the previous five years. So, yeah, so the motion would be that we would not allow the subdivision to the newly allowed, generally look smaller lot sizes, you couldn't go smaller than 15,000 square feet, which is large enough to keep a horse, you know, if the property has been used for horses in the last five years. That would maybe be a discouragement from buying the property, if it has horses on it now, to, you know, imminently build smaller things, but it would only apply to those properties that have actually had the use on them. So, we are, we are targeting this to protecting the use, to, you know, providing a sense of stability and continuity for those who are actually using their large lots for animal keeping purposes, but otherwise, being permissive to, to allow subdivisions to much smaller lot sizes and allowing the missing middle forms, and, you know, therefore, striking that balance between, you know, preserving, preserving this use where it is and encouraging the new uses that we need.
And I would defer to Ms. Stanek on this as well. Staff can't implement that. I don't know how we would track what properties were used within the past five years, was it continuous?
Sure.
It would be very difficult to enforce, and Ms. Stanek, is it legal?
So, at this point, it's, I think there's a way to craft this, so it could be legal, but I think as Mr. Rice mentioned, it's the enforceability component. For instance, we have, we do have some ordinances right now that code enforcement is tasked with enforcing, and specifically with short-term rentals. And part of the issue is, is, you know, identifying the property, if it's actually a short-term rental, it's not as easy as just saying, well, it's, it's up on, you know, this, this website Airbnb. You have to actually understand that they're actually renting it out as a short-term rental, and so, we've had this issue come up where we suspected it's a short-term rental, we can't find it on any websites, code enforcement's gone out to ask, people deny it's being used, you know, deny that they're there in a short-term rental capacity, we essentially sometimes don't have the ability to enforce. So, I think a motion like this would be really difficult, not only to try to track these properties, I mean, identifying them might be easy, but tracking their sale, or when like a subdivision application comes in, obviously that might trigger questions, but trying to figure out, I think, the second part, keeping large animals for any continuous period of six months in the previous five years, I think that would be the challenge, that last part.
Okay, understood. I have some reactions to that, but so many other commissioners. So, Commissioner O'Neill first.
Thank you, Chair. I think beyond the enforceability of it and just tracking folks, one, I understand the intent of the, of what you're, what you're trying to do here, and I have read the same comments and do, I think these properties are very important in Lakewood. On the other hand, if someone who has owned a property and had animals decides they want to sell it or need to sell it, and they then cannot sell it because of this ordinance, because they had, they had animals at some point, I mean, however that would be implemented, I think that could, I think that could become problematic just for their own property rights and their, and the value of that property, does the property lose value, which isn't our problem to solve, I realize, but it does, I think it's an unintended potential consequence.
Good to be aware of, I agree. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Chair. To be frank, I probably won't support any kind of amendment that would limit the ability to subdivide a large property in the city of Lakewood, just as sort of a general rule. I think the best solution, if you have a property with horses on it and you don't want it to be subdivided, is don't sell it to a developer, right? Like, sell it to somebody else who wants to have horses there, right? Like, that's one solution. Another is to pursue, I know that there's some discussion on Lakewood Speaks about conservation easements and that sort of thing, but like, if you have a large piece of property, there are other tools available within the government to be able to protect that. I get, I understand the sentiment behind this and from the members of the public who want to protect it, but I don't think that this body should be in the business of telling, I have a hard time looking at this from the perspective of, I want to tell my neighbors what they can and can't do with their property. I want to have my neighborhood remain exactly like this, so I'm going to say, my neighbors can't do X, Y, or Z. That's something that I think is inconsistent, at least with my perspective and values of how we should be operating, and it's also inconsistent with the desire to see more density. I understand that we have a deep history of horses and equestrian use in this city, and I want to be really clear to any members of the, you know, the, those of you who are still here, thank you, by the way, for continuing to spend your evening with us, and for anyone who's listening or who will be watching this later, this commission and this city is not banning horses, right? Like, that is not what's happening here. What I will say, though, is that I won't, I don't think that I can get on board to support something that would be preventing somebody from being able to redevelop their property in that way, within the city limits, if that's something that they want to pursue. I just don't think that that's something that this body should be doing, and that's just my sort of stance on that kind of thing. So, I will, won't be, I won't, I will, won't know on any motion that would do that, I suppose.
All right, thank you. And Commissioner Overall has her light on, but I'll, I guess I'll note that, you know, Bob's Rules of Order allow us to freely discuss without necessarily having a motion on the floor, but I think we don't technically have a motion on the floor, because I made the motion, but no one seconded it, so we might save ourselves some time. Does anyone want to second my motion? Did he? It was not. Yeah, staff had some comments right away, so we just kind of went into that, and it just kind of led to broader discussion. So, just kind of backing up a little bit, you know, we're not out of order, but it might lead to more clarity, is there a second to my motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Overall.
The hour is late, I will be brief. I too cannot get on board, I don't think I can get on board with a future restriction requiring less flexibility, less flexible use, despite understanding where this is coming from and, and appreciating people's right to control their own land and what they're doing on it presently, and continue to do that. But I think it's going too far to allow the, the comments that have been made here, which is, you know, leave my neighborhood the same, notwithstanding the property interests of future owners. I, I don't think that, that that's, that's not what I'm here to support.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I appreciate staff's comments on the difficulty with enforceability, you know, it would be my desire if, you know, to look into this, to, you know, try to find maybe a way to phrase something like this, that we could have a rule like this that's, that is more enforceable. But I think I can also count votes based on comments. So, Commissioner O'Neill, if you're amenable to it, I'll withdraw my motion, just it appears it would not pass if we voted.
Yeah, sounds good.
All right, I withdraw that motion, and I'll move on. I had another suggestion for the requirements in those tables for the RL zone district. Currently, in the RL A, B, and C, we have a primary building maximum limit. It's 3,500, 3,250, and, or no, it's a, it's a, what is it? It's, this is a, it's in section 17.5.2.4. We got some data on building sizes a month ago, which alleviated a lot of my concerns that potentially those buildings were actually too small and imposing too many restrictions on property owners. For three-plus units, if we want to really encourage more of that missing middle housing, there's a 500 square foot bonus, if you will, across all three low-form districts right now, to incentivize more. I would humbly move that we increase that bonus uniformly across all three districts to 750 square feet, and the rationale for that would be, it's, it's a number that's more closely tied to the size of a very small unit than 500 square feet is, and so, it might make it more easy to fit in, you know, a small additional unit. So, that would, that would, across the RL A, B, and C, it would increase the, the size bonus of maximum square footage for three or more units from 500 square feet to 750 square feet. Is there a second for that idea?
A second.
All right, we have a second discussion. All right, I'm seeing nothing from the commission or from staff, I think this is pretty straightforward, so we'll take a vote, a yes vote, we'll increase that size bonus from, for three or more units in RL zones from 500 square feet to 750 square feet. Hey, that one was easy, and it passes 5 Is, 0 Ns.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I know you've got a lot more, and before, but before you leave that particular table, I wanted to bring something up that staff had been working on over the past few weeks. The, this table that you are just amending limits heights in the low-form zone to 25, low-form and mobile home to 25 feet.
Yes.
That was a suggestion of our consultant. Over the past few weeks, our staff has looked at that and feels that that might be a little restrictive, and especially in terms of variety of roof structures. I think the consensus among staff is that's going to lead to a lot of flat roof, two-story buildings, and take away a lot of the variety that we're seeing in Lakewood now. Our suggestion is that we bump that back up to, if not to 35 feet, then to 32 or 33 feet, to allow that variety of roof types.
Okay, I appreciate you providing staff's comment there on that table, since, yeah, that was my last amendment that I had planned to make with respect to that table, but if anyone else in the commission wants to make a motion to Mr. Parker's idea? Commissioner O'Neill.
I would make a motion to up the roof height, or the maximum height of the buildings in, what's your zoning?
R-L.
R-L to 35 feet.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I think I can get behind that, the current R1 zoning is uniformly 35 feet, if I believe, right? So, yeah, so this motion would make the height characteristic of, of the new low-form residential zone identical to the maximum height of that. And the, and the, the building size, like square footage would still stay the same, so, like, you could build a taller building, but it would necessarily kind of have to get like skinnier, or, you know, something to compensate for the square footage, right? Yeah, Mr. Parker's saying, correct, and nodding. All right, I think that's also straightforward. Any other discussion? All right, cast your vote, a yes vote will increase the height limit to 35 feet in the RL zone. That passes 5 Is, 0 Ns. Thank you for that, that suggestion, Mr. Parker. The commission seems on board, so. There's a table in section 17.5.2.9, which is the, has the minimum open space requirements for the new residential districts. And so, a question for staff I had on the justification of the numbers in that table, I noted that in the, the RL A district, that's kind of the rural one with the largest 7,000 square foot lot size, the required minimum open space was 50%, and the RM district, it was 40%. If you compare kind of the like-for-like zone districts in the old code, the, the requirement for open space for the, the larger lot size, you know, R1 district was 60%, so we're actually dropping it down to 50. And then in the RM district, the old kind of equivalent district was the residential multifamily, that open space was, was 30%, so we're increasing it there to 40. So, in one of the zones, we're dropping the open space requirement, in the denser zone, we're actually increasing it. I wondered what the rationale for doing those things was, rather than keeping it consistent with the old zones.
Well, I think as we get smaller lot sizes, achieving that 60% open space becomes more difficult.
Sure.
So, I think that's the rationale behind that one. Even, even 50% open space is going to be difficult on the, you know, B and, RL B and C, especially with a potential zero, zero lot size.
Right, I mean, the size of the building and the open space drive the size of the lot in that scenario.
Right, right. I can't speak right now to the 40% in mid-form, I don't know if you.
The review staff didn't make a comment with the bumping up, because we're also recommending increases in open space for the mixed-use districts. Essentially, if you read the open space definition in Article 14, it includes hard surfaces, so it includes sidewalks.
Yes.
It could include tennis courts, swimming pools, et cetera, et cetera. It also allows for rooftop amenities to be used as well. So, the mid-form is more of a denser multifamily-type product, and our open, well, staff feels, and I've actually had a consultant tell me that our open space requirements for some of our multifamily standards are kind of low. So, we're comfortable with it, if you want to drop it back down to what it was in the RMF, we're fine with that, too.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Rice. Commissioner Gribble-Unis.
Thank you, Chair. Paul, do I, if my understanding correctly, that sidewalks, hardscape counts towards open space.
Correct.
And then, I might just be misunderstanding, but in that diagram in the section, Chair is talking about 17.5.2.9, there's like a diagram that says non-open space areas, and it's pointing to driveways and.
Buildings.
Parking areas, so.
So, the one thing that we, we do count when we talk about, so, coverage, driveway, primary buildings, and the, how do I say this? The, the, the large detached garage, so I think it's specific to your, your house, your garage, and your driveway count against your open space requirement, but if you put in a tennis court in the back, that is open space and doesn't count as.
Okay.
Your coverage requirement.
Gotcha. Yeah, I think I got it.
Yeah, garage, house, driveway, those are hard-surfaced.
Okay, so, Mr. Rice, following up on that, what about a, an accessory building, like a shed or an ADU even?
They, so then it comes in and it comes under the play when you're looking at single family, right? So, if you're, you're doing it a more of a multifamily-type product, you may not have these structures, but they count, they don't count against your open space, but they do count against your lot coverage.
Do we, do we have a separate lot coverage rule?
Nope, never mind, forgive me, so they don't count.
So, that opens up kind of a question, in the new RL zones, we're allowing cottage courts for the first time, multiple primary buildings, all up to 1,800 square feet, so would each of the 1,800 square foot max buildings count against the open space? I was under the assumption that, that they're not open space, they're buildings.
So, we're, we're still looking at, at one lot? It's a good question, we haven't applied the code. I'm assuming that with, if we came in with a cottage court product, the primary structures, we'd consider them that, and they count as coverage, so we do the calc that way.
Yeah, this, this whole discussion's enlightening to me about the nuance of the accessory buildings, I'd always just assumed that all buildings, driveways, and parking areas are not open space, and everything else is open space, but maybe that's actually a little bit too simplistic.
Right, if, if it's a, if you're pulling a permit, it's, it's going to count, if you get a small shed, nobody's going to know, and so, we're, we're not actually counting those against the coverage.
Okay. But I mean, I think, I mean, the, the most obvious interpretation I have of. But I mean, I think, I mean, the most obvious interpretation I have of what I've read is I, like cottage courts, I would assume that every building does count as a building and is therefore not open space for purposes of calculating the open space percentage of the lot.
And that's the way I would view it. I'm saying I haven't actually applied the standards, but yes, with a cottage court, if you're putting multiple homes, all of those would count against...
Okay.
...the open space requirement.
Okay. And then, while we're on open space requirements as well, going down a little bit further to table 17.5.2, that's the mixed-use dimensional standards. We are increasing by 10% the mixed-use requirements in the suburban and urban contexts for all the mixed-use zones. I noted that we're not increasing by anything the requirement for the transit context, and then we also used to have a rule that if, in a mixed-use zone, you have a single-use residential building, that a 30% open space minimum rule applies, and it looks like that footnote explaining that rule has disappeared with the net effect that, I think, in some of the mixed-use zones for like a single-use residential building, the open space requirements going up to whatever shown on the table, but for the transit context zones, the minimum open space is actually going down. So it's, yeah, I don't know, there's a little bit of each, and I wondered if there was a specific rationale for those practical effects in each of those three contexts.
Again, what I mentioned earlier, we felt the open space wasn't appropriate in the mixed-use districts, and then the other one was more complicated with the 35 or the higher open space requirement. That was in regards specifically, the way we put that together was the change to the mixed-use employment district, that's now going away. I know it affects the other ones, but we're comfortable with that as well. And then the transit, that's where you want your mo, we could bump that open space up if you feel that we need to do that, but that's where we want our highest and dense, most dense project, so we felt that that was still appropriate.
I see. So, correct me, maybe I had a misinterpretation. Was it only in the mixed-use employment zone where the residential-only building had to be solely 30%? How does that work, though? Because a residential-only building is not allowed in that zone. That's kind of one of the key difficulties that's made it so hard to develop there, that you can't have a solo residential building in that zone anymore. Or you couldn't since 2018, 19, whenever they changed that.
Pause on that. Do you have that in front? Travis is going to look at that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, the 30% open space applied to all single-use multifamily developments in all of the mixed-use, all five types of mixed-use zones, but not in the transit.
Okay.
Transit was always just straight 10%.
Got it. That's, okay, that's a nuance that I had missed in the old code. All right, well, having considered that discussion, and we just had Commissioner O'Neill step back, there's a motion I was going to offer up, but I hesitate to do it while she stepped Commissioner Gribble-Unis.
I could talk about something else in the meantime. It's just going back to the minimum lot size item, and just looking at it, for urban, I'm guessing where that 3,000 square foot came from, it's tied to the minimum lot width of 45 feet, and so, pretty quickly, once you start with the setbacks of front and rear, the minimum lot width, you, you know, you pretty quickly get to 2,500. So I guess I was going to bring up the potential of exploring the minimum lot width for urban being reduced to 30 feet.
Is that a motion?
I'll make that after your motion. We'll pick it back up.
Okay, we'll do that trade-off if you'd like to. So, I would move to reduce the open space requirement from 40% to 30% in the residential mid-form district to match the existing residential multifamily requirement.
Second.
A motion and a second. Cast your votes. A yes vote will reduce that open space requirement from 40 to 30%, and that passes five I's, And in the mixed-use districts, as we were just describing, Mr. Rice, can you remind me, maybe you have the table in front of you, that, what are the new requirements in the urban and suburban contexts for open space in mixed-use for all uses? Is it...
So, what is the new proposal?
Yeah, what's the current new proposal?
Right. So, with the, it varies across the board. The MNS, MGS are both at 30%. The MNU, the MGU and the MCU are 25%. And then the Ts, the MNT, the MGT and the MCT are 10%.
Okay.
30, 25 and 10. So essentially, the suburban, there is no suburban core, right? So that's why there's not a third one, but the suburban standards are at 30, the urban are at 25, and the core's at 10.
Okay. So the functional effect of that change is that we would be reducing the minimum open space requirement in the urban context for residential-only projects from 30% to 25%. You know, I feel like some of these higher-density multifamily projects we've had in the mixed-use zones that are solely residential is maybe where we've had examples of, like, the open space being the most useful and well-designed. We've had a lot of plazas, we've had a lot of thoughtful amenities in some of those multifamily projects. So, it could be valuable to keep the 30% threshold just for adding value and quality of life to those developments. So I guess I would move that, for the mixed-use urban context, for a residential-only development within the mixed-use zone, we keep the open space requirement at 30%. So that would be maintaining the existing code, but it would be an increase from the 25% that's the current draft proposal. This would only apply in the urban context for residential-only projects. Is there a second to that motion? Motion and a second. Commissioner Williams.
I don't want to be a contrarian here, but I, and I don't want to be a dissenting voice on these things, but I just, I don't know that I will, I like the idea of keeping it smaller so we can put more units.
Sure.
That's my philosophy. If everyone else is on board with this, I'm not going to, like, try and take it, but that was late, I won't elaborate, but it feels like a very small change for something that doesn't necessarily get us in the direction we're trying to go.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, I think, I mean, I'll say it, I think a lot of units is important. I think making sure that their quality is also important, and, you know, this is one of those requirements that, you know, in the context of these larger buildings, I think we have gotten, you know, quality open space. I would, might be argued that in some of the other zones, you know, commercial development and such, we have a lot of open space that's just kind of like a grass shoulder next to a parking lot, and no one really uses it for anything. But 30% is already on the low end in these apartment buildings that they've been, these open spaces have been stocked full of amenities, and I think generally on the low end of the minimum requirement, certainly the case we had two weeks ago was a perfect example of that, right? They were like 0.1% over the minimum requirement, but all of those four plazas and rooftop deck they proposed seemed like they'd be great amenities for the residents and, you know, provide more, you know, avenues for natural sunlight into the interior units and so forth like that. So, it seems like a quality improvement for, you know, the future residents. So, you know, where a site design characteristic seems to be achieving better quality, I think I like it. So that, cast your votes. A yes vote will increase that requirement to 30% for residential-only units in the Okay, and that motion passes four I's, one nay, the nay being Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Gribble-Unis.
Thank you, Chair. I'm moving to reduce the low-form residential urban minimum lot width from 45 feet to 25 feet.
Second.
The intention of reducing it is we have five-foot setbacks for the side, which would leave you with a tight but functional 15-foot buildable width. Tied with eliminating the minimum lot size, it would actually create the opportunity to explore some small, potentially more economical housing options.
All right, I like it. Are there any other comments? Yeah, I guess we should be mindful in this zone. I think this is a good thing, that there's already a requirement, if I'm not mistaken, staff, that you can have a zero-foot offset if the building's right up against the lot line adjacent to another building, right? So, like splitting a duplex or something, is that correct?
In the C.
Yeah, in the C. Yeah, and that's the zone that's pertinent to Commissioner Gribble-Unis's current motion, correct?
Could you repeat that, please?
The current motion, if I understood you correctly, was to reduce the minimum lot width to 25 feet in the residential low-form C district, correct? Did I get that right? The one that used to be urban.
Yes, correct.
Okay, yeah, so, I mean, I think that could result possibly with a lot with that narrow and like, like a town form, a townhome-like form of a building, but we would still be, you know, adhering to the 2,500 square foot limit, or the now 3,250 square foot limit as we amended it tonight for, if it was like three or more units, which I think would probably functionally limit, and we have the higher height limit now, too, that we just did, so you could get a more townhome-looking building on some of these lots, but maybe, like, based on the realistic constraints, maybe no more than like three townhomes across. I think I'm, I think I'm good with seeing a house like that. That's like, like an ideal textbook picture of a, of a missing middle form that we don't really build. Go ahead, Ms. Commissioner Gribble-Unis.
Yeah, it's kind of the way I've been hearing referred to lately is like detached townhouses.
Right. Okay, any other discussion on that amendment? Let's cast a vote. A yes vote will reduce the minimum lot width to 25 feet in the low-form residential urban or C district. The motion passes five I's, zero N's. Parking, I wanted to add some general exemptions from parking. On Monday night, council had a robust discussion about parking. It seemed, from my understanding of that conversation, there was maybe a little bit of appetite to reduce parking minimums a little bit more, but that they were still needed throughout most of the city, so I'm going to propose, I'm going to move the following list of exemptions from our parking standards. For number one, any residential uses in an RL zone are exempt from minimum parking. I think that's actually already taken care of in the, in the square foot requirement, so, hold on, let me restate my own motion. All land uses in a mixed-use urban or mixed-use transit context are exempt from minimum vehicle parking requirements, and also adding an exemption that, that the square footage of any residential building, I'm sorry, it's getting late and it's affecting me, too. Let me just offer this as one single motion, to exempt from minimum parking requirements any land use in a mixed-use urban or mixed-use transit context. Just keep it there.
I second.
Okay, so we have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Chair. I will keep this brief. It would be my, I will support this. It would be my preference. I don't think that there is necessarily political will or the votes, maybe even here or on city council for this, but I just want to state it for the record. I would love to see us take it further. I'd love to see us be a city that doesn't have any parking minimums. That would be my preference. I think that's the direction we should be going. I recognize that needs to be paired with things like greater transit and other types of on-street parking reforms, and I would really encourage staff, city council, us not to leave the parking discussion here in the future. I think we should continue to have that discussion, and I really would, I really want to push our city to become a model of what it could look like to not have parking minimums. That being said, I don't think realistically that that will successfully sail through this entire process, so in the interim of that, I will support this, but I do want to state for the record that that would be my ideal for our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Overll.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Similarly, I will be a blanket yes in favor of any reduction in, in parking requirements.
Okay, thank you. I'll explain for the record a little bit of reason for my nuance. This motion is just, it's all land uses, but only in the mixed-use transit and mixed-use urban contexts. Before our meeting a month ago, I compared DOLA's map of the areas where residential land uses are exempt per the new state law with our mixed-use transit and mixed-use urban districts, and it was almost entirely a one-to-one overlap. All of our mixed-use transit zones, every single one of them, was inside that DOLA map, so the residential requirements are already functionally gone there. It was all but one or two parcels citywide of the, of the urban context was also inside that. So, functionally, 95, 98% of the lots there, the residential use has gone, too. So, I mean, there's going to be a lot of more flexibility for, you know, walkable, transit-oriented developments in those areas. I think pairing the residential relaxation of the parking rules with doing it on the commercial side, just, it's fair for favoring both kinds of development and making sure that both kinds of development are as equally walkable and pedestrian-friendly and have the same sort of, you know, affordability and construction cost reduction boost that, you know, you get from not having to build excessive parking. Commissioner Overll and Williams, I think both your lights are still on from earlier. Is there anyone else who wanted to speak to this? All right, please cast your votes, then. A yes will remove parking minimum requirements in the urban and transit contexts. That passes five I's, zero N's. As a further relaxation of our parking requirements for housing, I was going to, I want to move to, we just strike the visitor parking standards entirely. There's a sliding scale of visitor parking for mixed-use transit and urban, and those parking requirements are already basically gone by operation of state law. So we've got some parking, visitor parking standards for suburban areas. The visitor parking requirement's pretty low. I've always thought this is just, you know, functionally, you know, adding like, you know, you know, 0.1 parking space or so to the requirement per the square foot. It doesn't do a lot. I think it's just, it's a cleaner and simpler code, and it does slightly relax the regulations to just strike the visitor parking standard, so I would move for that. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second discussion. Mr. Parker.
Just one thought on that. Unlike the standard parking requirements, which are for the residents of this building, this is for people that are coming in and out. And I don't want you to just think about people that are coming to a party on Saturday night, although definitely that's a lot of it. There's also often a need for spaces for delivery.
Sure.
And this could be DoorDash, this could be FedEx, this could be... So, the visitor parking does provide a place for loading and unloading, for delivery, that sort of thing. So, versus just requiring a space for every unit, I'd make an argument that this might have more function than, than maybe is being, has been thought of.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. That makes a lot of sense. I am curious, do we have... Is there precedent for having a delivery space in adjacent to that that's not visitor parking?
Absolutely. In my last code in Washington DC, we required loading spaces, so we could do that.
Does our current, does this version of the code require loading spaces?
No, right now, visitor spaces sort of meet that. These are spaces that can't be reserved for units, right? These are spaces that are not for the people that live in this building. So, they're meeting that function, although they could be, like on a Saturday night, they're going to be filled by guests.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, it seems like a lot this late at night to kind of bring up like a whole new idea of, of loading spaces. I do see, like, yeah, I acknowledge Mr. Parker's point of what the visitor spaces, kind of, the multiple roles they're filling right now in our code. Commissioner O'Neil?
I'll withdraw my question. I think we're moving in the direction of discussing this more later.
Okay. Yeah. If it's okay with Commissioner Williams, I'll withdraw this motion in favor of like later discussion by...
Yeah, I will withdraw my second.
Okay. That's fine. My final motion regarding, regarding parking will be to add an exemption for parking requirements for any square footage of a residential building that is devoted to units that meet the definition of low-income or moderate-income affordable housing as defined by Lakewood Municipal Code, Chapter 15.02, which defines what affordable housing is. So, so the intent of this motion would be that, you know, if you build one affordable unit in a building, that square footage of that unit doesn't count against your parking requirement. If you therefore build a 100% affordable building, like your Metro West or Archway or some other organization that does that, then there's no functional minimum for the whole building.
I second.
Okay. Commissioner O'Neil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question is for staff. What do you think?
I was actually just asking clarification on Travis, if the other group that's working on the attainable housing ordinance is including that. So, you end up, it's, it's fine. I think if it's consistent with where we're moving.
Thank you.
Yeah, Travis, do you have anything to add?
No, no, no issues.
Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Williams looked that close to wanting to say something, but I'll... Okay, you're good. All right. Let's take a vote. So, a yes vote on this motion will exempt any square footage in a residential building that's devoted to affordable housing from a parking minimum.
Was there a second? If so, I missed it.
There we go.
Thank you.
And that passes, five ayes, zero nays. Okay, this is my last motion I had prepared for the evening. So, we're coming to the end of a very long discussion. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me. And this might not even be a motion, it was just a question. There are incentives for increased height in mixed-use districts. That's in Section 17.5.3.7. And this, this is language that actually hasn't changed from the old zoning ordinance. I just, I was struggling to make sense of what it means and why we phrase it this way. There's a one-story or 12-foot height bonus for buildings that use Lytech, low-income housing tax credits, but it says at least 20% market rate. What's, what's the rationale of requiring some market-rate units in a low-income housing tax credit building to meet that requirement? It seems like, as I read the requirement naively, it seems to me like it's actually saying you can't build a completely affordable building or else you won't get the bonus. You have to leave something that's market rate.
I'm struggling to recall the, this was something we wrote in 2012, and I'm struggling to recall, recall the thought process behind it. I, I know there was an interest in the time of getting mixed-income projects, but I don't have any reason tonight to defend that.
What section was that again?
It was 17.5.3.7.
If you're making, if you're making changes to this section, one thing that's proven an issue to us is the limitation to projects that use Lytech credits, because we do have affordable projects sometimes proposed that don't use Lytech. And so, it might be interesting to just set an affordability threshold. And if it's met, whether they use Lytech or not, they get this, they get this bonus.
Okay. I think I'm down with that. I'll try to phrase the motion. I would move to amend Section 17.5.3.7 with respect to the one-story or 12-foot height bonus in a mixed-use district for buildings that use Lytech to instead require that any building, you know, with, with at least 20% of units meeting the definition of low-income or moderate-income affordable housing per Lakewood Municipal Code 15.02 would be eligible for the height bonus.
Second.
Okay, and so I just, I did do something on the fly here that I don't like doing. I just made the 20% threshold number up on the spot because I, do we want, there's, there's a maybe good policy question. Do we want to give this only to buildings that are completely affordable? Or do we want to do it for buildings that, that have some affordable units without, and some market rate, as the old definitions seem to do? And 20% is a number we use a lot in the zoning code and seems to exceed the likely threshold we'll get from an inclusionary zoning ordinance, though of course, we can't know that yet. Commissioner O'Neil?
Again, what, staff, what do you think?
I think that works. Yeah, it is higher than we would get from a, from a project required by IZ. I think it makes sense not to require full affordability, because then we could potentially get it from some market rate, so that, that works for us.
Okay. Excellent, so, so that's the motion. Any other discussion? And it was seconded, yes. Yes, Commissioner, yes, Commissioner O'Neill, thank you. All right, so we'll, we'll cast a vote. A yes vote will change the affordability incentive for increased height in a mixed-use zone district such that any project with any funding source to create the affordability with, with at least 20% of units in the building would be eligible for that credit. That passes, five ayes, zero nays.
Mr. Chairman, before you leave this section, do you mind if we bring up something else?
Go for it, please do.
Does your code still contain a subsection C to this 15, or 17.5.3.7?
Yeah, there's, there's three incentives. There's the old lead incentive, there's this affordability incentive we just talked about, there's a new incentive for 50% energy, like onsite generation.
On that last one, I'd like to recognize Kate Lamonge.
Ms. Long, please.
Good evening, everyone, thank you. Something that we from the Sustainability Division would like to suggest is potentially actually removing that last one. It was a bit of an oversight when the initial draft was getting released. Because it, with all of the different model codes that are coming out from the state, the new building codes are going to be really driving us towards electrification anyways, and it would make that height incentive a big bonus for something that most developers, we think, will be likely doing anyways as they're preparing for this. And so, especially when it's a combination of all three of these incentives could apply at one time. If they are doing lead and that overlaps with electrification, do they get credit for both? Even if they're just doing one thing? So, it was just, it was a bit of a, of an item that we think might have a little, need a little more fleshed out, and so we'd like to just strike it for the time being, if possible.
Okay, is there any commissioner who would like to offer a motion to strike that third incentive? Commissioner O'Neill?
I'd like to make a motion to strike the third incentive in section, I don't know the section.
Yeah, it's... 17.5.3.7.
17.5.3.7.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I'm seeing no discussion, so we'll vote a yes vote here. We'll have the effect of removing that incentive for onsite electrification. So, we'll be back down to just two different height incentives, the lead and the affordability. And that passes five, nothing, so that has been struck. Staff, the public who's still here and watching, commissioners, thank you for bearing with me as I brought an awful lot of ideas to the floor tonight. Yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied that a lot of these things will improve the code. We have several lights that just went up now, and so, let's go to Commissioner O'Neill first.
Thank you, Chair. I had a couple of clarifications from the draft. And something that maybe folks won't be ready to amend tonight, but I wanted to bring it up. The first was from the presentation, and my computer's dead, so I don't have any of the sections really in front of me. From the presentation from Mr. Parker, you were talking about adaptive reuse in some of these old buildings around the city. I think that is fantastic. And they've been assessed as, as my understanding, they've been assessed as potential housing based on the way that they're set up already, or they're just identified buildings that can be looked at?
Yeah, no, we haven't assessed any, any particular buildings. The idea is there are a growing number of vacant or underused buildings in Lakewood, and the idea is to remove one barrier. And there's still a lot of building code issues with converting old office buildings or old schools to residential, but the idea is remove the zoning barrier from adaptive reuse of these buildings.
Awesome, okay, I love that. I just wanted to clarify that. And then, the different types of dwellings was the next, it was five and six in the presentation. Temporary dwellings was one of the options, which just means there's no foundation. Would this include things like adaptive reuse on single-family residential properties? Like agricultural buildings, shipping containers? I mean, are we talking about those kinds of things being entertained in Lakewood?
So, the temporary structures are, or the temporary dwelling units are allowed in the mobile home district. I don't think they're allowed...
Oh, just mobile home, okay.
Yeah, I don't think they're allowed in...
Just a regular, single-family neighborhood?
Exactly.
Would that ever be?
If, if planning, commission, and council wants such a thing.
Okay. I mean, that's something that, I don't know what, I don't know if anybody wants to talk about this tonight, because I know we're not voting on the, on the final draft this evening, I think, right?
It depends on what we want to do with that.
Okay, well...
Going to be my next question to the commission.
Okay, well, so, that's a question I have for other commissioners. The thought of adding that to, the ability to use some of our more unconventional structures as housing that already exist, or just unconventional shipping containers, something, airline hangars? I don't, I don't know, I don't care. I just think that there's opportunity there. I don't know if there's appetite for that.
Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair. I walked into this meeting wanting to push us to pass the full ordinance tonight, mostly because I believe in the importance of moving government forward in a quick way when we can. However, I do think, Commissioner O'Neill, what you just brought up is something that is really important. The ability to use alternative spaces, things like shipping. I mean, today, in a single-family lot, you couldn't... My understanding is you couldn't put in like a shipping container house or some other more affordable way of constructing a dwelling unit as the zoning stands now. I do think that that is something worth considering. And my comment wasn't going to be like trying to push everybody to pass the zoning ordinance tonight, but if this is something we're willing to have a serious conversation about, I think it's worth having and, and going through that process before we pass this along.
Thank you. Commissioner Gribb-Unis?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not an expert in this, but, so staff, please correct me if I'm wrong. There's nothing stopping you from making a shipping container house or a house of anything, as long as it meets the code?
Right, I was going to go with, well, so, a house is a house, a shipping container is a shipping container, right? If you convert a shipping container to the house, you can put it in these districts. So, that, that's the thing. So, people refer to them as manufactured homes, right? So, you, when you think of those, you think as two pieces, and they bring them in, and they put them on a foundation, slap them together. Manufactured homes also includes, it comes in a box, right? So, you have all these pieces, pieces, and you assemble it. It also could be shipping containers that you stack like Legos, but they all meet building code. So, that's, that's kind of the difference. Putting a shipping, people want to do this. They want to put shipping containers on a piece of property and then start renting them for space. They're not safe. They don't meet any building code, right? There's not power, there's not plumbing. So, a shipping container is a shipping container, and a house or a residence has to meet building standards and do that. We have the units that are using for temporary conditions, but that's kind of another regulation. They follow under another category.
Yeah, I guess I would just add, the goal is more than likely with these, the exploration of turning existing structures into residences, creating more, I guess, missing middle or naturally affordable housing. But to bring something like that up to code is, is more of a luxury thing that would occur.
Yes.
But, point being, you can't do it.
But it's fast, but it's quick construction.
And it's cool.
And it's cool, yeah.
Well, yeah, there's, there's just, there's nothing stopping you as long as you meet code.
I was under the impression in Lakewood, there was something stopping that, so there's not.
No, yeah, I don't know that this is a problem. Our goals align with yours, and I don't think this is something that we need to go too far down. That the only limitation, the, the difference in definition between the temporary and the residential is just attaching it to a foundation.
Okay.
So, a mobile home park, you couldn't roll a mobile home into a low form and just leave it there. You can do that in any mixed-use zone or the, or the mobile home zone. That's the only distinction. You could order a manufactured home and attach it to a foundation in, in a low-form residential.
Okay.
So, I don't, I don't see a problem here if...
Same thing with an existing barn on a property or something like that that could be turned into a residence as long as it's code compliant?
Yep.
Oh, okay, well then, scratch that, we're already there. That's great. The only other item I wanted to bring up was the 15-foot setback in large animal properties, on large animal properties, the fence line situation. And I know it's throughout that, the animal section of the code, the draft. The consideration of striking that, I mean, my understanding from our last meeting was that the reason for doing that was an attempt to separate these properties due to complaints of smell and other, I know there's other things that come with living near agriculture. However, they're still there 15 feet away. So I'm just curious if that, if, if there's an appetite on the commission and by staff to just, it seems like it causes more of a hardship for those properties than a benefit to others.
Staff could agree with that amendment as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Commissioner O'Neill, remind me, or staff, you could remind me, what does that 15-foot setback pertain to?
The containment area, essentially, that's the containment area. And the, the interesting thing is, it's a couple of things, right? So it could be a barn, or it could be a pen within the pasture.
Corral or something?
Right, so it's a little, yes. If, if, if that's the commission's desire, we'd be open to that.
Either way, we probably need to, we were talking earlier tonight with members of the public, we need to clarify
About clarify.
What a containment area is.
Right.
And so we could do that, whether or not you change the, we need to clarify that.
Do we have a definition for what a containment area is?
We don't now, but it's what he said. It could be, it's the place that they live and/or move.
Right.
But not the past, not the whole pasture.
Is the idea to clarify it by adding a definition to Chapter 14 or some other means?
We haven't solved that yet.
Okay, but there, you're working on it.
Yeah, and that will be part, we'll, we'll clarify that for the next version, regardless of whether you change the setbacks or not.
Okay. Commissioner O'Neill, would you like to make a motion?
Sure, yep. I would like to make a motion to strike the 15-foot setback in, for all animal enclosures in all sections of 17.4.3.1.
Second.
Commissioner overall?
For the same reason that I'm not on board with requiring a neighboring space to also be large enough to have livestock. I also would support this because I think that neighbors know what they're going, they're getting into when they buy a property next to livestock. And so that's, that's their problem.
Right, so I guess classically, the concern is there could be odors or noises or whatnot from these kinds of enclosures, and a 15-foot setback, the intent is to somewhat minimize that on a neighboring property. So we're just, we're just getting rid of that, yeah.
And the 15-foot setback is a new proposal. It's not, it's not that we're changing old regulations, we're actually adding something new.
Right, so there's never been a requirement in this area, and we're adding a new one. Yeah, which, which I guess could have the effect, then, that we could be making a lot of these containment areas legal non-conforming that, that already exist. I understand, so yes, staff is adding, adding their heads, yes, okay. So I think I understand that. Any other discussion, commissioners? Seeing none, let's vote. A yes vote on this motion will have a zero-foot setback from the property line requirement for the large animal containment areas.
All containment areas?
All containment areas, for all containment areas was the original motion, yes. We voted five, nothing to pass that. The motion carries. Does anyone else have any other amendments to this code or map? Commissioner overall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know I came into this feeling very unprepared to vote on this today. I, I, I no longer feel that way. You know, I, this is a big deal. This, this proposal, the ordinance, all of it is a big deal, and I don't know what I don't know. However, I do know that there are four other sets of very, very thoughtful eyes on top of an extremely talented and thoughtful staff that's put in a ton of work into this ordinance. I was hoping that at a future date, I would have had time to actually prepare a, a proper applause to the staff for this code. What we're doing is nibbling at the edges of something extraordinarily good. I think this squarely places Lakewood at the forefront of mid-sized cities with, that are mostly suburban in terms of combating traditional exclusionary zoning. I am on this council because, on this commission, because I hoped for the opportunity to promote, to promote smart growth principles that leverage the growth in order to achieve things like affordability and diversity. I think that's exactly what this code does. And, yeah, my hat is off to you. I very much appreciate being part of this process, and I, I think other cities can look to this code to, and, and, you know, what, what developers do with it, we shall see. But I think other cities can look to this code and see a very hopeful future.
Thank you for that, Commissioner overall. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Commissioner overall, for those words. My goal here has been to make sure that people understand that Lakewood is open for business, right? Like, this is a community that is forward-thinking, that is a place where we are accepting of different people, of new people, that we recognize the constraints of growth. I personally grew, I'm born and raised in Boulder, Colorado, which is a place that restricted all of these things, and as a result, is a community that no one in my family and none of my friends live in anymore because no one can afford to live there. That is not the future that this city should have. So I, I agree. I mean, this is an incredible piece of work from the staff and from this commission that we've been working very hard to make better. I look forward to hearing how city council can and continue to improve upon this. I, my question to my fellow commissioners is, is there appetite to just, to go ahead and pass this tonight? Or I would love to see us continue to move government forward efficiently and effectively, and I don't want to drag this out another two months if we don't have to. I'm seeing some nods. I think I would like to offer a motion to approve and pass the zoning ordinance from the commission.
I second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve and pass the zoning ordinance as amended.
As amended.
Yeah, and I, maybe I'll quibble. We're not approving and passing it, we're recommending that council approve and pass this. Are you, is that, you accept that?
That is, I accept that friendly amendment, thank you.
Okay, and the secondor as well? Yes?
I wasn't the secondor.
Oh, who was? Who was second? Commissioner, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, it's late, I can't hear, I can't tell who's. I don't know how you mixed up, I don't know how I mixed up those two voices. You accepted a friendly amendment, yes. Great, yeah. Commissioner Williams, I appreciate your, your words and, you know, your kudos to staff. I want to echo them. Staff has worked very hard on this. Of course, we'd be remiss not thanking the many people in the community who contributed to this. You know, we had a, a year-long, you know, engagement process with stakeholder groups developing the comprehensive plan, and the boldest and biggest ideas and changes in this zoning update do come directly, I think, out of that comprehensive plan process. You know, more missing middle housing, you know, greater emphasis on, on development that leads Lakewood in a direction of greater sustainability and inclusivity and equity. Those are all core themes of the plan, and I, I think this zoning update does a very good job of capturing all those things. You know, there are concerns out there, and I, I know we always will have, have these concerns about, you know, the, the character of our community, and are we losing some things as we change? You know, and I, I acknowledge that the, the plan does speak to those things as well. You know, respectfully to a lot of those concerns, you know, I, I do think that the RL zone is thoughtfully designed, and I, I do hope that so, you know, we see that, you know, keeping these criteria, the height criteria for the low-form residential is now exactly the same as it's been for a long time in Lakewood for homes. The, the setback criteria is generally the same for, for most lots in the city, except for maybe some of the very largest ones, the open space requirement is the same. You know, the mixed-use zone district changes we've made are really nibbles around the edge compared to the big changes in the residential zone districts, which, you know, but I think the design criteria and standards we've set out are things that, you know, will maintain a, like at least an architectural look that's, you know, hopefully consistent with a lot of these neighborhoods. Because these standards have been very thoughtfully chosen, and I do want to emphasize that to the community. And so, you know, I think we can do multiple things. We can keep a community that, you know, looks to the scale and character of what we're used to and what we like, while also making room for, for more neighbors and for more housing that is desperately needed. And what I'm really excited about, too, is that, you know, the, the mixed-use zone districts that we've had for the last 12 years, I think we're already really good at, you know, promoting big multifamily developments, which are a housing type which is needed and is in demand, and that's why it keeps getting built. And there's a lot of, you know, there's a growing number of, of, you know, households of smaller numbers of people who, who demand housing like that, and so it is going to remain a need. And we've done a fairly good job of, of meeting that demand. We've not done as good of a job for, you know, ownership housing, for housing for families that's in this missing middle. And I think these changes to the RL zone do a lot of that, and so I'm, I'm really excited about that as well. So, yeah, I think for all my ideas I brought tonight, I agree, it's mostly nibbling around the edges, and I just, again, thank all the community members who participated in the comprehensive plan process that drove this zoning update process, and then thank, thank staff for driving it forward. I'm pretty comfortable with where we're at, I think, like the rest of my commission is. I would throw out that there are maybe a few reasons to, why planning, commission can come back to this. You know, there's my bird-safe window idea that maybe more research could, could help us have a discussion on, but I, also, I don't know that it is an issue that needs to hold up the whole zoning code. I think that's an issue that possibly us and/or council could return to later anyways. You know, there might be some satisfaction in seeing some of the ideas that city council wants to put forward, come to us in another meeting. I thought before tonight, maybe that's the reason we, we wait around another month to see what additional ideas council will have on June 2nd, when they're meeting to discuss this same draft code. But really, we're the body that makes recommendations to them, and so if they say on June 2nd, hey, we want to do X, which was not on our radar, I mean, are we really going to say, no, you can't do that, because we're going to recommend you don't do the thing you already made clear you want to do? That seems kind of pointless. So, you know, I, I think, you know, the recommendations we've made tonight, the one map amendment we've made tonight, we clearly heard from the community that was one. I think the text amendments we made, you know, we all thoughtfully considered. And I, and I hope city council will consider them and that they stay in there. But again, we're all cognizant, these are all just recommendations. We, when it comes to legislative matters, this body can recommend. And then the actual legislative body, council, can take our recommendations or not. So with that framework of how to look at it, I think I am comfortable with voting in favor of this motion to, to recommend to council the work as we have it now. Commissioner Gribble-Yunus? Are you trying to put your present? No, anyone else? All right, with that, let's take a vote. This is the big vote. This, a yes vote here will recommend to city council that they adopt this draft zoning ordinance as we have amended it tonight. Cast your votes, please. And that passes five eyes, zero nays. Congratulations, everyone. Mr. Clerk, we have an item five on the agenda. Can you read it into the record, please?
Item five is for the approval of minutes for April 23, 2025, and May 7, 2025.
All right, and may I have a motion from the commission with respect to these minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Cast your votes, this will approve, a yes will approve the minutes of April 23rd and May 7th. That passes five eyes, zero nays. Mr. Clerk, please read the next item into the agenda, next agenda item.
Item six, general business.
Mr. Rice, what do you have for us with respect to schedule?
So I think I could be really quick. So we were contemplating a, an additional hearing on this matter, which we won't be having. So our next calendar business item is July 16th, unless the commission has other interest. And it'll be a, for a plat and a special use for a fueling station. So if you have a conflict, I think if Jaime hasn't polled for July 16th, he will be pulling for July 16th.
Okay. To the extent of my knowledge, I'm free that night. Does anyone else know right now if they have a conflict? Mr., Commissioner Williams, you're good? You're good?
And the
July 16?
I'm unsure of July 16th.
All right, and we may have additional commissioners as well, so it may not be as critical for the, for the five of you. So I think
Yeah.
The selection committee is meeting this week, is that correct?
Yes, it's been publicly posted on Lakewood Speaks, the council's, boards and commission's selection committee is meeting tomorrow night to interview candidates for these two spots. I understand from conversations I've had and what I've been told that their goal is to appoint two qualified candidates to fill the two vacancies on this commission. You know, that will have to go forward for the full council's approval after tomorrow night, but by July 16th, I would have to imagine that will have occurred with, quite easily.
So that'll, that's the next date we have before the commission.
Okay. Is there any other general business that any staff or commissioners want to bring up?
Really quick, I just wanted to confirm, is there anyone that's not an assure that they're not available for July 16th? Okay, and I know there's some unknowns, it's almost two months away, so I'll keep an eye out for that, and thank you all.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Is this, this, this can't be a zoom-in, right? Because we're, it would be a vote.
Correct.
Yeah.
It'll be quasi-judicial, yes?
Yep.
You know, after the last two months this commission's had, I think I could, I'm okay with a easier pace of meetings, so.
Enjoy June.
It's summertime. It looks like there's nothing from anyone else. So general business was the last item on our agenda. And so therefore, I declare this meeting to be adjourned at 11:23 PM.